I'm giving her a new last name. We're waiting on some people to get here from their travel plans, and we also have some people that are out for sickness. However, we do have a number of people that have signed up for public participation. So we're going to have a quick change to where we do public participation first in order to make sure that we give you guys the time that you deserve since you were here. Therefore, on our list up here, we're going to have public participation in this order. So if you'll look up here and find your name, I will call it, but also if you'll go ahead and kind of get in your spaces, that would be wonderful as well. You'll come up here to the microphone. You have three minutes, and when the time is over, you will hear this lovely bell. So beautiful. What a tone. And then you will go back to your seat if you so choose, or you can stay with us as we continue to have probably quite the meeting this afternoon and evening. So first, can we see Nicole Gregory? And then after that will be Karen McIntyre. Do you have Deborah Smith or Grace Olson? You can come on down if your name has been called. Good evening, and you are?
I'm Karen McIntyre, 2501 Ravine Drive, Nashville. And I'm here with a group of people who are concerned about composting and sustainability. You know, life hands us things all the time that we're not expecting that are less than ideal. And we're always taught to assess the situation, step back, do a little research, and then to plan a course of action. This is true whether we're planting a garden, buying a swimsuit, or saving the planet. As we take one action, we engage, we learn more, and that modifies what we do next. And that's the way it is with sustainability. You know, I began recycling 40 years ago by recycling newspapers and using finger towels instead of paper napkins at dinner. And now I recycle conscientiously, compost religiously, plant native plants in my garden at school and at home to feed wildlife. I help children garden. I like snakes. Well, maybe I appreciate snakes would be a better way to put it. But the point is, we all start at a different entry point in sustainability, but we all walk the path together, and we all come to the same conclusion. If we want our children and grandchildren to have the same opportunities to live in a natural world that affords them happy, healthy lives, sustainability is the only answer. We all say we want sustainability, but our actions don't speak that way. When we choose to be sustainable, we act knowing that it might be inconvenient, or it might be painful, but it's necessary. We live this way, and it requires a cultural shift in our attitudes. It helps us weave together global citizenship, sustainability education, and outdoor education for our children to give them a coherent, rewarding, and transformative experience. But we don't have the luxury of time today. It's not 1990. The polar ice caps are melting seven times faster than we thought they would. My beloved sequoias are on fire in California. The West is in the grips of a thousand-year drought. We're experiencing extreme weather here, and we must do something. It's easy to say that we support sustainability, but if we don't act, we don't. We're here asking you, as a sustainability advisory group who's active in the schools right now, actually, we're telling you, we've been doing this, but we can't succeed without you. We need you. We need you to step up, to speak, not just to speak about sustainability, but to act, to make it a priority to act in our schools, to help our teachers, our students, and our children, and their parents be the change we are going to have to be if we want them to have a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deborah Smith?
Good evening. My name is Deb Smith, and my address is 115 North Timber Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the benefits to students that I have observed from the Westmead Elementary Composting Program. In my role as a volunteer compost chaperone, I provided encouragement and assistance to students as they separated non-compostable items, compostable scraps, and sealed up reusable food items from their lunches. Now, while I believe it's very important to reduce food waste, I want to stress how the program promotes student citizenship, leadership, and experiential learning. Mental health experts are increasingly seeing young people experience what is being called eco-anxiety as they worry about the future of the planet. One way to help children cope with their fears is to provide opportunities for positive action. The composting program does just that. It was clear that as the children physically separated their items, they were making the mental and the emotional connection that they had the power to change the world. I also observed how the project developed leadership skills. Classes had compost captains, students who were responsible for helping other students make sure their items were properly sorted. Because of the seriousness with which the students undertook these efforts, the process took just a few minutes for each class. I particularly recall two third-grade girls, who I am sure are going to be CEOs of major corporations in their future, because with great competence, they got their classmates lined up and monitored the process. I just stood back and watched them go to work. Now, the most coveted responsibility of the compost captain is getting to use the grabber to grab out items of plastic that may have gotten in the right spot, in the wrong spot. And I will have to admit, there may have been a few occasions when the plastic got put in the wrong spot just to create the opportunity to pull it out. The composting program does more than create compost. It helps children understand and appreciate the food chain cycle, assists in forming lifelong habits of responsibility, and it provides the opportunity for children to make a significant contribution in their community. I hope you will consider these and the other many benefits of a sustainability program as you plan for the future direction of our district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Grace Olson.
Grace Olson, 895 General George Patton Road. Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Olson. I'm a rising senior at MLK High School, and I am representing District 5. Sustainability is something that is heavy on many of our hearts. According to the Climate Clock, the same one that made headlines in New York, shows that we only have seven years, nine days, and 20 seconds before climate change is irreversible. Why are we not acting on this? We deserve better. Your children and grandchildren that will go through this very school system have their futures at risk. Although my generation is one of the most passionate about climate change, we need every bit of help that we can get, no matter your gender, sexuality, race, or ethnicity, because the climate crisis is something that applies to us all. I created the MMPS Environmental Committee during my freshman year with hopes that I would be able to do groundbreaking work. After working with the district for a year or so, the person I was working with left, and I never heard anything else. My goal was to get composting at MLK as a pilot school, get work on solar panels in the district, and furthering education to all students. Change can still be made, which is why I hope to pursue these goals in the upcoming school year. According to Green Schools Alliance, sustainable schools have 87% reduced absenteeism and 74% ability to attract and retain teachers compared with conventional schools, which are prevalent issues in our district. The main MMPS mission statement is to deliver a great public education to every student every day. It is simply impossible to fulfill that mission without sustainability. MMPS still has work to do for academics. Third through eighth graders lag behind the state average for English, based on a recent Tennessean article. Not only is this an issue about sustainability, but it turns into an issue about education. Sources show that with natural light, test scores, especially in math and reading, increased, while productivity increased by 12% in a room with plants, reported by Washington State University. Another benefit is how much money the district can save by becoming sustainable. During my phone call with my district representative, Ms. Bugs, she stressed her focus on MMPS employee salaries before considering a sustainable director. On average, sustainable schools save about $100,000 per year compared to conventional schools. These are simple starting blocks. I'm not asking us to start with a grandiose plan. With all of this taken into consideration, I hope that you all will review sustainability with higher importance. When you make this decision, think of the 86,000 students in the district. Remember me who stood here before you today. Remember that your decision counts. Thank you all for your time and allowing me to speak for you today.
Thank you, Grace. Always so nice to hear from a student. PK Fain. If I pronounced your name inappropriately, please let me know. Adam Skelton. Sheri Drummond. All right. Katerina Mushawek. Thank you for your encouragement and your correction.
My name has never been pronounced once correctly, so...
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm grateful to speak in front of you all today. Thank you so much for having me. This is my first board meeting, and I'm thankful for Karen for inviting me to be here. As a member of the community who understands that humans have the ability to shape what the future looks like for us on this planet and in Nashville specifically, I'm excited to talk with you about the sustainable opportunities and imperative solutions that MMPS can implement. There are many ways to educate students on the importance of being stewards of this community in ways that are cost-effective and relatively seamless to implement. For example, taking a look at what critters live in our creeks around the area and to see if they are pollution tolerant or not. Also, using compost bins in the classroom and cafeterias to discover what food and other organics can be composted and diverted from landfill. Students benefit greatly from experiential learning and understanding how their food returns to the soil to create nutrients that are then absorbed by plants, and producing more food for them is an empowering and exciting way for them to connect with the natural world around them from the familiarity of their school building. We've seen success with initiatives like this in the past, when someone within the system has the authority and the budgetary means to implement them, and when individuals step in to support those initiatives. I'm excited to hear about the new Sustainability Committee as a positive step in that direction with the understanding that the cost of not taking care of our planet is astronomically higher than the preventative measures we can take now. Furthermore, with the Rutherford landfill closing to our materials and pollution caused by our own landfills growing, we owe it to ourselves, our community, and our children to take up responsible ways to become society changers through educational sustainability programs. We've had success with composting pilots in the past. I'm on the leadership team at Compost Nashville, and I know that we've helped with these programs, and would love to explore the opportunity to do that again. So thank you so much for having me, and it's exciting to see several green shirts supporting sustainability initiatives.
Thank you. Next is Spencer Sherrill. Spencer. Next is Kaylee Gardner. Next is John Hagman. Next is Roy Renfro. I know that face.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roy Renfro, the Director of Tennessee Nature Academy. I live on Pettis Road in the community where someday our school will be. I'd first like to address those in attendance and watching from home about the MMPS School Board. Throughout the whole process, they have been very warm. They have asked great questions and have had some great, fair dialogue. I even got a warm smile from Rachel Elrod, so I consider that a win. We are very serious about the academic success for our future students. We submitted a 316-page application with 193 footnotes to show that. We're also serious about having fun. We were outside playing with about a dozen kids and some goats before the school board meeting to show that. Childhood should be both challenging and nurturing. The board will vote here tonight on a recommendation of the MMPS Charter Review Committee. In a moment, a representative from that committee will walk forward and present a report of their so-called evidenced findings. I've read that report, and we've documented over 18 unfactual statements where the review committee either miscited Tennessee state law or misrepresented the Tennessee Nature Academy application. So I now turn my attention to that review committee. I'm very disappointed in y'all. Your report was unfactual. It was sloppy. It was biased. It was highly speculative at best. We've taken this process seriously, and I am supported behind me by dozens of people who came out thinking this application would have an equitable and serious conversation. That begins with an equitable and a serious report, which we did not receive. We have an official response on our website at tennancenatureacademy.org. I've also emailed it to the board members, and I've also provided 20 hard copies, which board protocol says I can provide in case the board would like to see those hard copies. I ask that prior to the vote for Tennessee Nature Academy, you consider taking a 10-minute recess to review these resources so that we can have a fair and equitable conversation about the merits of the application. Since I have a bit of time, I'd like to read some of these findings to give you a taste of what I'm talking about. So about recruitment. They said it is concerning that with enrollment hopes of 684 students, TNA only has 149 families on their mailing list. I want to point out that enrollment of 684 students is for the 2029-2030 school year. If you do the math, that means I should have been recruiting two and three-year-olds this year. Those parents are focused on potty training their child, not where their kid will go for middle school seven years from now. About ADA compliance, they said this plan leaves a lot of details unanswered. Supply chain issues will impact their timeline for required instructional space and needs. Supply chain issues. If this were a board meeting about the discontinuation of the Popeye's Spicy Chicken Sandwich, that would be inadequate reason, but this is for the approval of the first public nature-based charter school in Middle Tennessee. I'm running out of time, but our... Okay.
Next is Hita Williams. Hita Williams. Next is Safia Swara. Safia.
It's actually Sophia, but it's fine.
I overdid it. I apologize.
It's an honor to be standing here as a student with NOAA. Today, I want to share three topics affecting the equity and access of Advanced Academics. First is the lack of resources. Second is actually having diversity in the classes. And third is having teachers and faculty there to support students. When I was attending John Early, it was a wonderful experience. The school has a museum inside of it, and I had a lot of opportunities because of it. But even with these opportunities, we didn't have everything we needed. When I was there, we didn't have enough computers for everyone to use at the same time, so we would wait until the cart was wheeled into our classroom, and even then, there was no guarantee they would all work. We initiated a computer drive for the school, and thankfully, with COVID funding, they were able to fix this problem. But the issue is that once that money is gone, what is going to happen? Is John Early meant to wait until another disaster to have the materials they need? We need to focus on schools like John Early so that we can support students and send them into the world as educated people. The purpose of Advanced Academics is to prepare students for more challenging and difficult subjects that they will encounter. How can we prepare them if we don't have the tools necessary? Secondly, diversity is incredibly important in education. I usually stick out like a sore thumb, but it was refreshing going to John Early and being surrounded by other Black people, and then coming to Hume-Fogg and seeing other Muslim students. But once I had gone to John Early and started participating in their advanced courses, I noticed something. The classes that were meant for the gifted kids were filled with people who didn't look like me, even though the school's majority Black. Since John Early was a pathway school to Hume-Fogg, it suffered from students transferring in at their last year and taking up spots. I was in both of the high school credit courses, and it was filled with people I hadn't seen the year before. Even when we have the ability to challenge students who need it, there's limited vacancy, and then we're stripping students of that chance to be challenged. Finally, it's important to have teachers who can assist and support these students. In all of my Advanced and AP courses, I have had only one African-American teacher out of five classes, and it wasn't even at John Early. How am I meant to go into the world and embrace its diversity when the people who are shaping me lack that? In a study by Johns Hopkins, it was shown that having even just one African-American teacher in elementary school can make African-American students more likely to enroll in college. The importance of diversity in seeing people from your own community is an integral part of life, and if we can't provide that for them, then we can't prepare them for the future fully. In conclusion, having diversity of both students and teachers in the classroom, as well as providing resources for students, is extremely important for making sure education is full and students have the opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Sophia. Next is Grace Olson. Grace Olson.
She already spoke.
Did we already have this? She already spoke. It's on here twice. Thank you, Ms. Grace. I'm so sorry. I see your confusion. I apologize. Next is Sharanda Smith.
Hi. That was close. Sharanda Smith. I reside at 2506 Walker Lane. Thank you. Good evening, board members. Due to the current controversy surrounding Governor Billy's solicitation of Hillside to set up over 50 new charter schools here in Tennessee, I understand why the board would feel pressured to outright deny any new charter schools. However, I would also hope that in the wake of our collective national reckoning on race, we can understand that communities across the country need resources that are better meet these community needs. One in every five Black elementary and middle school students in Nashville attending district schools is on grade level in reading and math. Now, compare that to the academic achievement of white students in the same school, who's closer to half the students are on grade level. This disparity not only undermines our students' future, but it feeds into the false narrative of which racism is built, that somehow minorities or people of color are lesser. We've seen that hundreds of students have left the district during the pandemic in search of school options that meet the needs of their families. The reality is that many low-income and families of color just don't have the option to relocate or pay for private schools. This further segregates our schools. Tennessee Nature Academy's Diverse by Design model is an amazing opportunity for Metro Nashville Public Schools to take a step forward to school reintegration by providing an amazing option and the most diverse zip code in our state. Diverse by Design research suggests that racial and socioeconomic integration is one of the best pathways for creating successful schools that produce strong results for students and its communities. Students in diverse schools have higher average test scores, graduation rates, peers of similar backgrounds attending schools with concentrated poverty. The experience of learning in integrated classrooms alongside peers with different experiences, perspectives, and abilities helps to reduce racial biases and increases creativity, motivation, deeper learning, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills. Now that I've told you the facts, I am a little disappointed that instead of listening to the 250-plus families that assigned our petition asking for the approval of Tennessee Nature Academy, that Metro Nashville Public Schools Review Committee wrote an unfactual report to try to taint TNA's chances of getting approved. Integrating nature into early childhood education is beneficial to the brain development, improves academic performance, enhances communication, has other health benefits. The message from the review committee to Black parents like me is clear and all too familiar. Diversity has to be intentional and by design. If not, we will continue to have segregated schools and educational inequalities for our kids. Thank you.
Next is Frenchada Howard.
Hello, and good evening to all present. My name is Frenchada Howard, and I spoke to you all last month at the June School Board Meeting. After that meeting, I decided to do a little research. So over the last month, I've taken my own time and watched previous school board meetings that have been held this year since January. As I sat and watched six months of meetings, I was feeling a little disconcerted. From those meetings, there were in excess of 60 or more public participation speakers, ranging from advocates to parents to MMPS staff and teachers. Their concerns range from materials being taught in the district, transportation woes, bullying and harassment at the school's level, students not being prepared for post-high school education or life, discrepancies between minority test scores and overall learning, low teacher morale due to the lack of support in having to cover multiple classrooms while not getting breaks and feeling as if their needs aren't being met, feeling threatened by students, and lax discipline. They have spoken on their desire to ascertain fair teacher wages and work in a more desirable working environment. Parents have spoken for months, begging to be partners in the process, asking for more transparency, speaking on our concerns, especially of those with high school students, about the rampant violence in high schools, gang activities, fights drugs, and their inability to learn due to all the other distractions. We have voiced our concerns about being shut out, our voices going unheard, and how phone calls and emails to board members go unanswered. It was noticeable in each meeting that during the public participation, most of you sat unengaged, aloof, or got up and left entirely, when this is our moment to air our grievances and even accolades for our district. It is also disheartening that we come here month after month with the same concerns, and nothing is done to assist, nor are steps taken to show us as parents that you are listening. However, what really had me befuddled was in every meeting, from parents, students, and teachers, mouths spoke of how Metro isn't serving them or their best interests, how they're tired, frustrated, and scared. Yet in every meeting, we get to sit through a pep rally for Dr. Battle. Is Dr. Battle all bad? Absolutely not. And there are several areas in this district that could do better under her leadership, absolutely. But this board never speaks on what's going right, wrong. They just always want to give accolades about the things that are right. People take their time, use their gas, and make their way to attend these meetings, to speak their truths, air their grievances, seek solutions, and attempt to be engaged and engage with this school board. We want to feel that our voices and concerns are being heard. For many people to speak on the same issues for over six months, but no true change happens, and it's business as usual for this board, my question is, what is the exact purpose of the public participation portion of these meetings?
Thank you. Next is Roger Wayneck. Roger Wayneck. Oh, that's you. Thank you.
Good evening, MMPS Board. My name is Roger Wayneck, and I live at 3,000 Hillsborough Pike in District 8. I'm the Board Chair for the Tennessee Nature Academy. I work for the Tennessee Department of Finance Administration, the Office of Customer-Focused Government, and I evaluate operational budgets every day, so I'm used to the world of numbers and spreadsheets. Tennessee Nature Academy is committed to going above and beyond with its financial sustainability, transparency, and accountability. I would like to address the MMPS Review Committee's misunderstandings in our financial plan that led to the Does Not Meet Standards rating. These are also present in the document that Jay has already shared with you. The first items of concern were that of our pre-opening budget in FY '23 did not include light items for rent and tenant improvements for our incubation space. We have already begun diligent negotiations at our leading incubation space. I could go into minute details of this, but with limited time, please refer to that document that Jay has already shared. The second filing was about our outdoor classrooms. The claim was that the applicant included only one $20,000 outdoor classroom in their budget, and this is just incorrect. Our five-year budget narrative states that our facilities' costs include an additional $20,000 for an additional nature-based classrooms in Years 1, 3, and 5, which includes accommodations to ensure compliance with any ADA and building code requirements. Notice that it does not cover one classroom and that the line item appears every two years as the student body grows. As a side note, $20,000 is a large amount for outdoor classrooms, which are usually anywhere from free to a few thousand dollars. I attended the capacity interview and noticed we received no questions related to financial sustainability, transparency, or accountability. I'll say that again because I think that matters. The MMPS Charter Review Committee did not ask any questions or voice any concerns about our budget during the capacity interview. The review committee dinged us again by misciting the Tennessee Code Annotated and the Tennessee Nature Academy application twice in this section, by saying our teacher ratio is out of compliance. Again, the law allows for an average of 1 to 25 with a maximum of 1 to 30. Our average is 1 to 18 with a maximum of 1 to 27. It's concerning that the MMPS Review Committee made such a major oversight as it relates to Tennessee law. I thank the board for their time and ask that they take a recess prior to voting for our application so they can review the concerns in the application themselves. Thank you.
Next is Fran Paul Lobo.
Good afternoon. My name is Fran Paul Lobo. When teenagers think something is cool, they will call it the GOAT, which stands for Greatest of All Time. We were out front of the school board meeting today with a GOAT to signify that we think Tennessee Nature Academy's school model is truly the greatest of all time. As a middle schooler, I participated in Tennessee Nature Academy's earlier programming, and we did things like going camping, hiking, and growing pumpkins. and we did things like going camping, hiking, and growing pumpkins. These things are beneficial because it can teach us basic survival skills and give us some time outdoors to learn about new things we might use later on in our life. These experiences were also great because it gave me an opportunity to create and strengthen bonds with people in my community, people who I have been friends with for almost eight years now. A school like Tennessee Nature Academy would be great for our community to let the kids learn about nature and the world around them. Please support Tennessee Nature Academy tonight and be a GOAT with your vote. Thank you.
Next is Kristi Mayo. Thanks, Ms. Mayo.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Mayo, and I live in District 2. I'm disappointed that Dr. Battle is not present to hear comments, the public comments.
She is.
Okay, thank you. That's great to know. Dr. Battle, this is your quote that you published in a Tennessean article on June 11th of 2020. "Great principals aren't just administrators. They are leaders who set the climate and culture to create an excellent learning environment and place to work." Dr. Battle, I believe that what you said is true, but what happens when the principal and assistant principal create such a toxic and abusive work environment that 25 teachers feel that they need to leave at the end of this school year at Oliver Middle? We have teacher statements confirming the details of Oliver's toxic environment caused by the principal and assistant principal's leadership, and you'll hear some of those statements tonight. MNPS did not do any exit interviews with these teachers as required by MNPS policy. What are the Oliver leaders hiding? Dr. Battle, the toxic environment caused by the leadership at Oliver Middle is your responsibility to fix. You have the power to make a leadership change here. Ms. Elrod and school board members, you have the power to hold Dr. Battle accountable along with her staff. Dr. Battle, can you confirm that you told Oliver's principal, Ms. Wilson, at a Tampa conference a couple of weeks ago, "It's okay. You aren't going anywhere"? MNPS agreed to an in-person meeting to have parents' concerns and questions answered, but now this meeting has been hijacked by the principal and Dr. Hammond, who has turned this meeting into a back-to-school-meet-the-teacher night instead of an opportunity for parents' voices to be heard. Parents are fed up with the lies and the chaos caused by the leadership at Oliver Middle School, and we want change. And I appreciate those of you that are here to listen to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Williams.
Hi. My name's Rebecca. I live in Stanford Village neighborhood in District 2 as well. I'm a mother of a rising eighth grader at Oliver Middle School, which Kristi just spoke about. So I'm here to also talk about the many concerning issues at OMS. My daughter will be entering her fourth year at Oliver, and so we have seen firsthand the changes over the past three years. Her first year there in fifth grade was great, and she loves to go to school, band drama, and she was loving it. And then things changed her sixth and seventh grade year. Like Kristi said, there's been a mass exit of over half of the Oliver teaching staff, 25 teachers gone, which includes the entire band department. We've heard from teacher after teacher that there was no support from the administration, and specifically Ms. Wilson. There was chaos in the school. Many teachers feared for their own safety. So when I think back and I remember the days that my daughter came home from school and she talked about how horrible school was and that she hates it, she doesn't feel safe, and that there was a kid that was picking on people and she didn't feel safe around him, I just hushed her and said, "It's just school, and sometimes we have to do things we don't like." Little did I know that there was teachers being assaulted, kids skipping class, cursing, threatening, fights, and absolutely no discipline by the school administration when the kids misbehaved. And if that's not enough, two lockdowns in the last month of school, poor handling, and no policy in place to protect our children. There was a loaded gun in the school in the girls' bathroom, and the lockdown wasn't issued for 30 minutes later. There was children and teachers left in full exposure in the middle of the lunchroom, which has glass windows. There was no support or comfort for my child or any of the other children that day, no helping them through this crisis, but they were told to go back and finish their testing, their state testing that was taking place that day. Once again, I ignored my kid's concern when she came from school that day. She argued, saying she didn't want to go to school the next day, she didn't feel safe. And I told her, thinking that the school wouldn't be like that and that they would only allow kids to come back if they were safe. So I don't know what's going on, but I know that there's no support and there's no response from Ms. Wilson. We've sent her emails, and she's never responded to any of them. My daughter doesn't even know what she looks like because she's never seen her. I've lost total and complete trust in Oliver School and the administration, and if I take my child back to Oliver, not only do I fear for her safety, but I fear for her life. And that should speak volumes to the school board, that I don't feel safe taking my child to school. And it's not just any school at Metro, it's Oliver, because when there's a lack of discipline and there's a lack of school, I mean, they can't even manage their own children there. So someone who is actually going to take a gun and possibly harm the entire, there's no policy for them, and there's nothing to protect them. So I've done it too many times by hushing my child. I'm not going to do it anymore, and that's why I'm standing up and fighting for her today. Y'all shouldn't ignore her either. So on behalf of me and the parents and the teachers, I want to demand a change, and I demand that the administration of Oliver be changed, there be a new principal.
Thank you. Next is Natasha Johnson. Did I say your name correctly?
I couldn't hear. It's Natasha.
Oh, I did.
As in Taj Mahal.
Natasha, thank you. I want to make sure I'm providing that correctly.
So my name is Natasha Johnson. I'm from 1104 Zermatt Avenue. I am a former student of Oliver, and I'm here to read an excerpt of a statement written by a former teacher. "After spending many years teaching at Oliver Middle School, it saddened me to be leaving the community and writing this statement. In the time I spent at Oliver, I witnessed its decline from an outstanding, positive professional environment to the toxic, unsafe place it is for teachers today. In order to take care of students, administration first needs to take care of its teachers. I can assure you that neither students nor teachers were properly cared for by administration or the quadrant supervisor during the last year. Teachers were tasked with responsibilities that went far beyond the role of classroom teacher. Teachers took on these responsibilities with grace and professionalism, often with little to no support from our administrators. When teachers reached out to administrators for help or support, we were usually met with excuses, unanswered emails, and closed office doors. Throughout the year, it felt as though teachers were met with hostility from administration. When legitimate concerns were brought up, administration responded to them with defensiveness and anger rather than collaborative solutions. During each and every passing period, students sprinted through the hallways, put hands on one another, cursed, broke school property, vandalized bathrooms, got into physical altercations, and bumped into or ran over innocent bystanders, including teachers. When teachers asked for admin presence on hallways during passing periods, an admin might show up for a singular passing period but would never be seen in the hallways again after that. I have never felt as unvalued, unseen, and unsafe at work as I did this past school year. I spent the majority of the year truly feeling as if administration did not care about me beyond the fact that I was showing up to school so they didn't have to find someone to cover my class. The joy of teaching and learning has all but disappeared from Oliver due to admin's actions and lack of action. Admin has allowed certain people who are in the front office to make teachers' lives as difficult as possible by putting arbitrary roadblocks in their way. Simultaneously, admin has also allowed certain staff members in admin-adjacent positions to skate by while doing very little except pawning tasks that were part of their job off to teachers, as well as planning events that are full of toxic positivity and sending passive-aggressive emails to teachers. The students are by far the best part of Oliver, and I'm so sad to be leaving them. I know that I can no longer be the best version of myself professionally or personally at Oliver. Thank you for your time."
Next is Lily. Lily Dow.
Hi. I'm Lily Dow, and I live at 5625 Montel Lane. I'm a former student of Oliver Middle School, and I'm here today to share part of a prepared statement from a teacher who has left and was not mentally able to come up here and speak tonight. I am one of the 24 staff members that decided to leave. I had hoped to be at Oliver Middle School for many years, but due to several reasons, I decided it was in my best interest both personally and professionally to leave. When the school went on lockdown, sixth-grade students were at lunch, and I was told by a school staff member that I could not leave the cafeteria due to a school-wide lockdown. I wanted to return to my classroom where I would be able to lock my door and be secure. I was notified by a follow-up teacher that the lockdown was not a drill and that a student had a loaded weapon in the building. No other details were given to me at the time. For the next 20 to 30 minutes, I was forced to remain in an unsecured cafeteria filled with vulnerable children. Not only were the cafeteria doors unsecured due to the maintenance issue, the windows in the cafeteria were not covered by anything. For 20 to 30 minutes, all I could do was try to remain calm as I processed the following thoughts. Is today the day I will have to run for my life? Is this the day where I am a victim of a school shooting? If so, how on earth am I going to protect myself and my students if I were forced to sit here in this cafeteria like sitting ducks? After the lockdown was lifted, instead of addressing the trauma that was caused by such an event, our assistant principal walked around and passed out a printed script to teachers and simply said, "Say nothing except for the script." It blew my mind that we were expected to carry on with our day in TNA-ready testing as if nothing had just happened. If you were to ask my students who their executive principal is, I wholeheartedly believe they would not be able to tell you the principal's name or their assistant principal's name, for that matter. I believe this because rarely did the students or myself see them. This in no way is meant to be a personal attack on anyone or to imply anything. Almost every time I entered the front office, the executive and assistant principal's door was closed. I rarely saw them during class transitions. For the duration of this school year, I only had one brief to two- to three-minute conversation with the executive principal. Their absence reinforced feelings of being unsupported at Oliver Middle School. I would have loved to stay at Oliver Middle School. However, due to the feelings of being disregarded, unsupported, and unsafe, I decided to seek out available opportunities within the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Give us down. Next is Christian Hernandez.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Christian Hernandez, and I live in the Cambridge Cluster. In fact, I am a graduate of the schools in the cluster where TNA, or Tennessee Nature Academy, will be. People are trying to say that these schools are not overcrowded, but I attended classes in these schools where there were 39 students per teacher. Thirty-nine students per teacher. I forgot about even to ask for help or anything because it was just too many students per teacher. My little brother is going into the fourth grade, and we are looking for school options for him. I'm speaking on behalf of him, who is only eight years old, and I am also speaking on behalf of my parents, who can only speak Spanish because it is their first language. We want him to be able to attend TNA in the coming future. His favorite part of summer was doing their free RNN and Nature Summer Camp. He learned a lot, but was also able to go there and have fun and be a kid, not being afraid of ever having a gun pointed at him or feeling safe in a community where he was loved and cared for. I am a first-generation college student in my family, so I understand what it is like to navigate through a non-alien system that seemed to me as if it were designed to exclude us, or exclude us most definitely. A school like Tennessee Nature Academy is super important for the community of people who are not from here because it is like the school was designed to appreciate and celebrate diversity instead of just going around and putting us through a system or acting as if we were just a number in a classroom. Many immigration families come from farming communities, so a school like this is a place that might remind them of home and make them feel welcome, like they have something to contribute to the child's education and not just be blindsided and sending him off to a school where they don't understand what's going on there. Please support Tennessee Nature Academy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Baron. Next is 25 Baron Yesen.
Good afternoon. My name is Burin Yesen. I live in District 2, and I'm a former Oliver Middle School student. I would like to read a statement from a former Oliver teacher. "I have been employed with Metro Schools for 25 years. For the last eight years, I have called Oliver Middle School my home. Due to an incident that happened in March, I chose to retire this year. I had a student assault me by putting hand sanitizer in my drink. When I took it to administration, their first response was, 'What had I done to the child to make them do this?'" Their second response was, "Why didn't I have my drink covered?" Their third response was that I needed to notify the parent. The student admitted to putting the hand sanitizer in my drink. The student was given three days of OSS, and I was told that a restorative meeting would take place upon the student's return to Oliver. That did not happen. I did fill out an injury report and also a police report. I chose not to press charges at the time because I just wanted to finish out the school year to the best of my ability. My principal never reached out to me or even mentioned the incident. I will be pressing charges on the student. I have a year to do so according to the officer that filed the report. I am also seeking legal counsel. My safety or well-being was never a concern to administration. The student was put back in my room upon his completion of the three days of OSS. I requested twice that the student be removed from my room and put on another team. I was told both times that they were, quote, "working on it." I never received an apology from the student or the mother. I truly believe that protocol was not followed in this situation. I spent the last couple of months of school living in fear of what this child would do to me next. It was not my intention to retire this year. Ending my career on this note is devastating. I truly love my job. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Next is Tamila Inshrood. That's not you. Savannah Williams. Sarah Savage. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Savage. I'm the co-founder and chief academic officer at Tennessee Nature Academy. Our current address is 5844 Pettis Road in Antioch. I've been an educator for 12 years, and I care deeply about providing students with access to meaningful learning experiences that are aligned to Tennessee academic standards, prepare students for important assessments like the ACT and AP exams, and prepare students for life after high school. I'm excited about the academic model that Tennessee Nature Academy has put forward in our application. We're proposing to offer a unique school model that leverages a nature-based, project-based learning approach to advance college and career readiness for students in Nashville. Our application cites several studies which have found that this approach supports students' academic success, reduces achievement gaps, and supports students' health and well-being. We emphasize career and technical education and support students who wish to pursue advanced placement coursework, earn industry certifications, and participate in work-based learning opportunities. We're proud to offer an innovative schooling option for students and families in Nashville, especially one that has been proven to improve learning outcomes for all students. I do want to take my remaining time to address some of the review team's findings on the academic components of our application. I am grateful for the consideration that has gone into our review, and I know that the review team's goal, like mine, is to serve the students in our community. The findings that I'd like to discuss are inaccurate and were used to justify a partially meets rating of our academic program design. First, the team shared a concern that Algebra I would not be offered for eighth-grade students. We outline our intention to offer Algebra I to eighth graders in Sections 1.3 and 1.9. The review team also shared a concern about whether there would be mathematics courses offered other than precalculus, such as statistics. offered other than pre-calculus such as statistics. We do plan to offer statistics as well as pre-calculus and calculus and we describe this in Section 1.6. The review team was also concerned that we would employ one EE and one EL teacher upon opening. Our plan is designed and budgeted to employ one EE and one EL teacher in each grade level, so two EE teachers and two EL teachers upon opening. That's reflected in Sections 1.9, 2.4, and Attachment N. We describe our comprehensive research-based plan to support English learners and students with disabilities in multiple places throughout our application. Unfortunately, the time limit prevents me from continuing, but before you vote tonight, please, please take an opportunity to review our application and the handout that our executive director has prepared. We're humbled by the response from the community so far and we're excited to continue our work in service of the students and families here in Nashville. Thank you for your time.
Next is number 29, Stanley Panthawong.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Stanley Panthawong and I live in the Antioch Cluster. I have a little sister who participated in the week-long, week-long summer camp hosted by Tennessee Nature Academy and we would love to put our trust in Tennessee Nature Academy and send her there for middle school. Being a first-generation immigrant, my parents don't speak very well English, but TNA has made efforts in connecting through communication and creating a family-like community, so on my, so on my parents' behalf and many more, I'm asking you to please support TNA. Nature-based learning is not only for people who want to work in conservation or agriculture, it is for anyone who wants to connect with nature and learn about the earth and life around us. Some things I hear a lot of parents say is that they want their kid to play outside, to not rely on technology and spend all their time indoors. So, having a school that brings back this implicity of reconnecting with nature, taking care of our planet, and creating a family-like community would appeal to a lot of people, such as myself, and shape a new reliable generation of leaders. Having a nature-based school would have a lot of benefits for the kids, for their families, and for nature. Don't just take my word for it, though. Research shows that when kids spend time outside, their reading and math scores have a significant improvement. Research also shows that the risk of obesity and chronic disease is decreased when spending time outside and being active. And so, as said before, I hope that you all will be a goat with your vote tonight and support Tennessee Nature Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panthawong. Next is Amy Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Amy Stevens. I live in Davidson County and I've had four children attend Oliver Middle School. You have known that Oliver Middle School was in crisis. I've been told by the district that they didn't know all of this was going on until this past May. It is your responsibility, whether you knew or not what was going on, it is your responsibility to know. If you do not know what is going on, it is still your responsibility as overseers at Oliver Middle School. This administration is negligent in carrying out their duties and responsibilities and has a tremendous lack of leadership. They are not equipped to run the school building. I have conducted many interviews with teachers and have compiled this list on my findings, including but not limited to: failure to arrive on time, administration regularly arriving after 10 o'clock, taking long lunches and leaving early, failure to park within a designated assigned parking space, failure to record days absent or time away from the building, failure to lock and secure doors, entering and exit the building regularly from side doors, failure to be visible in the building especially during student transition times, failure to attend student school events and activities, failure to return emails and phone calls from parents and teachers, failure to follow through with behavioral referrals and S-Team collaborative referrals, failure to have regular faculty meetings, failure to create and provide a master schedule, failure to train teachers on the complex grading system then berating them for their mistakes, failure to provide timely and accurate consistent and consistent bookkeeping, failure to abide by state standard testing rules and requirements, failure to oversee a proper ISS environment, failure to have control in the halls, failure to complete proper teacher evaluations, failure to complete exit interviews with the teachers, failure to secure students during a lockdown. These leadership failures and administrative failures are unacceptable. Many of these failures would result in termination in any other job. Why is this incompetence allowed when it comes to the safety and education of our children? Two short stories. Let's say two eighth graders get in a fight. It's common for those students to be separated and sent to a fifth or sixth-grade classroom for the rest of the school day. This administration would put an upset eighth grader in a fifth-grade classroom. Secondly, it's my understanding that a student who was a known aggressor was assigned by administration, an administrator, to the custodian. At one point, the student spit on the custodian, the custodian pushed him away, and this custodian was fired. This custodian is a third-party employee not employed by MMPS. Again, the solution to this problem is not acceptable.
Next is Mr. Steven Slater.
Hello, I'm Steven Slater. I was once the school resource officer at Oliver Middle School. I spent 20, two, two months shy of 29 years with Metro Police Department, 16 years overseeing schools within the district, 14 of them with Oliver Middle School. I'm here today to talk about the safety and security of what's going on in the school today and, you know, I understand, I've heard that this is going on everywhere. We are talking about Oliver and I do not believe this is going on everywhere. With these lockdowns took place, to say there was not policies in place, I left them policies in place when I left. There were very firm policies. I was part of Metro Police whenever we went, did site surveys throughout all Davidson County with all schools in case there was an incident, that we can implement a plan to care for these students and teachers and staff in case there was something that took place. So for this to happen twice in a school, especially once that was a real situation where there was a gun in the school and policy not to be fulfilled, that should be an offense that would make anybody change in leadership. It's a failure that was going on with these students today. I did an exit poll for metro schools for the teachers that left because a lot of them were great teachers that were there when I was there and they are now gone. And I'm hearing the story, "We can't get teachers now." Well, guess what? You had teachers, but the leadership run good teachers off to go to different districts, some going to different schools within the district. This is unfair, what's going on. I have their statements today. You heard some of these students and parents read part of these statements. Dr. Battle, I know you're virtual today. This is on you, Dr. Battle. Board members, I appreciate you taking the time to come in here and do that, but you hire Dr. Battle. You have the right because we are your stakeholders here. You have the right to do something to make sure this gets fixed and we are not going away. This will be fixed, I assure you, because we got children's lives at stake. I was just, just up in the inner cities and talking and seeing kids running around just the other day. And what really pains me is we're playing politics with their lives. We're playing politics. It needs to stop. We need to fix this. So many kids for so long looked at school as a safe place from some struggling environments inside the home. We've got to do what's right here. Ms. Bush, it's good to see you again. I appreciate the time. I got to spend with her son Dalton for a few years. What a wonderful young man that is. He is. So, board members, Dr. Battle, we need you to fix this now.
Dr. Steven Slater. Next is Patricia Miller.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for letting me come here tonight to speak on the behalf of the Tennessee Nature Academy. My name is Patricia Miller. I live at 13566 Old Hickory Boulevard, Antioch. I have been an environmental educator for my entire career, a museum educator and naturalist in several states for both large museums and smaller nature centers. I came to Nashville in 1978 to work at the Cumberland Science Museum as education curator. My most recent past position was as the Aquatic Education Program Coordinator with the Tennessee Wildlife Resources Agency, which I held for 15 years. In this position, I coordinated with the Departments of Education and Environmental and Conservation to organize large weekend symposiums for educators with the purpose of encouraging them and supporting them in developing outdoor classrooms at their schools. This core group drafted and encouraged our state legislators to pass, which they did in 2010, the Tennessee Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, which state that every child before entering high school should have the opportunity to walk in the woods, play outside, explore nature, watch wildlife, grow a garden, splash in the water, camp under the stars, learn to swim, climb a tree, go fishing, fly a kite, and visit a farm. Why did we do this? There are volumes of research that you've heard about some already that support nature-based learning and the boost in academic results that that brings. Every discipline can be taught in this context. Specific benefits include better cognitive development and working memory, benefits to mental health and well-being, and physically active children have lower rates of obesity. Stress is limited, relaxation is promoted, childhood development is enhanced with growth in physical, social, emotional, and personal skills. And by exploring natural environments, children develop problem-solving and risk-management skills, confidence is boosted, and physical dexterity is improved. I live in the southwest-eastern corner of Davidson County near the Cambridge Community Club where I serve on the board, which boards District Two and District Six. And this area is one of the most rapidly growing communities in the county and is the most diverse zip code in the state. The board of the Cambridge Community Club has officially given their support and welcomed the arrival of the proposed Tennessee Nature Academy to our community. This aligns with objectives of the club to support a sustainable, equitable, and diverse community. So tonight, as an environmental educator and Cambridge Community Board Club representative, I ask that you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jenny Broder.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jenny Broder. I'll be teaching at Granberry Elementary this year, which guess what that feeds into? Oliver Middle. I taught at Oliver for 13 years. I thought I'd be there until I retired, but I simply could not bring myself to work there under the current leadership, leadership any longer, and I left at the end of the 2021 school year. The fact that over two dozen teachers, including all the band directors, left this year alone at a place that usually has very little turnover should be an indication that Oliver is broken. I can finally talk about it now without bursting into tears and that's a direct result of the trauma that I endured because of my leadership there. If I had to narrow down the problems to three general areas, it would be communication. At times, the communication to staff was abundant, while other times it was nearly nonexistent. We would get extremely lengthy weekly updates, but they would be poorly worded and filled with outdated or contradictory information. It was like a treasure hunt to find out and write down the important bits because you may not hear about them again until it's too late and you're being reprimanded for not doing something. Number two, support. It shouldn't be necessary to push so hard to advocate for my own needs or for the needs of my students. For example, my students should automatically be given the length of time they're rightfully allowed in TCAP, right? Well, we shouldn't have to contact the Department of Assessment and Evaluation to get the schedule changed to accommodate our students who receive extended time when admin refused to address our concerns. And finally, number three, kindness or lack thereof, I guess. I can't tell you the number of SEL trainings I've attended over the years. I know how important it is for students to be surrounded by love and kindness at school. It seems teachers should get the same treatment from their admin. I've never been treated with such disrespect as I encountered my last year there. It makes you feel like you don't matter when those who are entrusted to help you make it clear they don't have time for you. For example, I wrote an email to my admin after my professionalism conference, asking if she would meet with me to discuss what changes I could implement the next school year to improve my score. Rather than schedule a time or give me suggestions, she told me I could check the rubric on the state site to see what is required at each level. Now, to be clear, I referenced that exact rubric on my evidence that I supported to her for why I felt I deserved certain scores. It's clear we interpreted the rubric differently, yet she made it clear she did not have time to help me understand what she expected. Every interaction I had with that particular admin was met with condescension. She even called me deceitful and claimed she suspected I was acting out of ill-will when I planned to deliver supply bags to my students during the pandemic. Those are big words, deceitful, ill-will. I never suffered with my mental health until that year. Being treated like you're unworthy of someone's time, especially the time of your boss, messes with your head. I'm openly pushing for changes. Please help us. Thank you.
Last, we have Nancy Stetton.
Hello, my name is Nancy Stetton. I live at 4306 Nebraska Avenue. We started this session with talk about sustainability and I'm going to come around back to end with it, to need to bring our children in contact with nature, not just in one school, but in all of our schools. Nature is the model for sustainability. It works in cycles. Composting is part of that cycle. At Park Avenue Elementary, where I'm a volunteer, we use composting to teach this principle that sustainability means completing the cycle. We have a very simple composting site consisting of dead leaves and coffee grounds, which even the smallest children can help to build. We mimic nature in that we don't stir our compost. We just let it accumulate as it would in the forest. In the late summer and fall, we have two classes. First, we examine green leaves. Even our youngest students know that leaves can use sunlight to turn water and carbon dioxide into sugar. Now we look at how that takes place. Why is the top of the leaf different from the bottom of the leaf? Where are the chloroplasts? How does water get into the leaf? How do carbon dioxide get in and oxygen out? Why are the tops of so many leaves waxy but the bottoms are not? In the fall, we study what happens to the leaves. Why do they change color? Why do they dry out? Why do they fall? Then, we examine the compost pile. Because we do not turn our composts, the students can examine a cross-section of the pile and see the transition from fallen leaves at the top to soil at the bottom. They also see that the compost is full of life, worms, slugs, centipedes, beetles. These leaves, the leaves feed life when they are green and they also feed life as they rot. Nature works in cycles. Everything that is made is broken down and returned to the earth. Humans alone create huge amounts of trash that never decomposes, killing animals and polluting the land and sea. If we are to create a sustainable world, we must copy nature and return as much as possible to the earth like leaves in the forest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that participated during public participation that period of our time. We'll see you again for sure in August as we do not have a second board meeting in July. But considering that we now have a quorum, I'm calling this meeting to order officially. We will go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Sevier, would you mind leading us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have any amendments to the agenda as listed? All right, go ahead, Mrs. Tyler.
Yes, please. I'd like to pull Items 1B11, Knowledge Academies, Inc., off the agenda, 1B1, Brightly, formerly Dude Solutions, and 1B18, Nashville State Community College.
All right, as amended, 1B1, 1B11, and 1B18. Do we have any other formal suggestions to the adoption of the agenda? Mrs. Elrod?
If we are to move, we need to amend the, do we need to amend the agenda to move our governance issues above the board discussion while we have our quorum, or means before our director's report? Excuse me.
I'm sorry, can you ask that a different way? Are you asking for us to move?
Should we move this up here to keep our quorum? Should we move this up here to keep our quorum while we have our quorum?
I think we have a quorum for the rest of the evening.
Are we going to leave it?
Nobody plans to leave.
No.
No one plans to leave? Okay.
We're fine. All right, our apologies for the confusion. All right, we will, we have completed public participation, but we have not yet heard our director's report, I guess, a report from Dr. Battle. Dr. Battle, if you are with us, you can take it away.
Thank you, Trevor. I apologize. I'll be able to lead and register for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. So I'm happy tonight to...
I'm sorry, Dr. Changus, my apologies to interrupt you. I did not realize that Mrs. Player Peters was here. If you don't mind, could we pause this for a second? Mr. Wood...
Marsh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marsh. Can we amend the agenda considering that Mrs. Player Peters, her flight will not be, I think she, she's on for just a few more minutes, and if there is anything we need to vote on, can we move that up while we still have her?
Yes, the board can amend its agenda. I do not know how many items would need to be voted on before her flight, but...
So it looks like consent agenda needs to be voted on, and then the amended charter school applications need to be voted on. So if we could move all of governance up, then immediately after that, have the report from Dr. Battle, and then have the board discussion about elementary school safety. My apologies, Dr. Changus and Dr. Battle, if you all don't mind, I want to make sure that Mrs. Player Peters can weigh in. With that, we need a motion to amend this agenda and move governance issues up.
I move that we move all governance issues to before director's report, then have the director's report, then board discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, and as a reminder, Mrs. Player, when it comes time to vote, or if you have anything to say, we'll need to see you on camera, but you're fine for now. All right, thank you, all involved. We'll start then with the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was amended?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, passes unanimously. We'll start with 1B1, Brightly, Formerly Dued Solutions. Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, so the term says it was for immediate purchase without an end date, but the service itself is for a renewal of a program, so I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification on that. If you could just, are we, are we spending more money on the same program? Does this, are we having to change it because the name is changing, because it says Formerly Dued Solutions?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kevin Edwards, new Director of Procurement, so you'll be seeing more of me at these meetings. But I will speak to the Brightly. This is actually a purchase using a national cooperative agreement, so we have done this in years past. It is just for a one-year software renewal, so it is just covering through June 30th of 2023. As it relates to, I think, a question around pricing increase and name change, they are under the new name, which is Brightly, Formerly Dued Solutions, so that is part of that new cooperative that we are referencing for this purchase. And the price has increased. This cooperative was renewed in April of 2022, so for this purchase for this school year, it is reflecting a 10% increase. I think last year it was around $55,000. This year, the price is a little over $60,000.
Okay, and this is just for our work orders, our warehouse inventory control? That's what this?
Correct.
And so should we expect to spend $60,000 every year moving forward?
Using the current cooperative, if we were to make this purchase again next year, I would assume it would be probably around that same. If we were to look at doing our own internal request for proposal, then it could potentially change.
And then is this, before, I had been under the impression that this was just a name change, we weren't actually spending this money, but so this is new news to me, sorry. Is this commensurate with what other programs cost? Because I thought we weren't spending this, I'm sorry. I was given misleading information before we started.
Sure, so in comparison to other work order platforms, other, most of them do have national cooperatives. This is actually on the lower end of spending. There has also been, a year ago, our own internal RFP with Technology Services to see if we could have maybe a combined work order platform with kind of the service ticketing platform that Technology Services uses, and that proved to be significantly higher than using this current cooperative. So facilities did not choose to go along with kind of what Technology Services was doing, and that was actually split back out into being kind of two separate purchases.
Okay, and is this going to be the same program that we used before, so no new training will have to happen?
Correct. We have been using, I think, this program since 2011.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Do we have a motion? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Little.
Just one question. Why the increase, I think you said 10% in costs for the software?
Sure, so the national cooperative that we were using had, similar to our own contracts, it has a limited term, so a new contract was entered into as of April of 2022. This is reflective of that new contract pricing.
Okay, but why the increase in costs for the software?
I think similar to most other supply chain things that we've seen, inflation certainly is a key factor in that. So what we've seen from last year's purchase to this year was reflective of a 10% increase. The only thing that I can kind of relate to that as well is from the other cooperative solutions that are out there, this is once again still on the, the lower end of the pricing that MNPS would need for a work order solution.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to accept Brightly.
All right, we have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. The 6-0, if we can see Mrs. Player. All right, 7-0, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 111, Knowledge Academies.
Yeah, so just, this is something that is coming to us, and we did not get information about this until yesterday at about 3:00. And so I have been kind of frustrated that we're not able to do our, you know, due diligence to understand exactly what's going on. I would prefer for us to have an executive session so that we can hear what all of our actual options are, instead of having it put on a consent agenda that we're supposed to just rubber stamp that is moving forward. I'm really frustrated that, that we got to understand what's happening in the school system, and we got to understand where our place in it is, and if we don't have a full understanding of that, then why is it on a consent agenda that we're supposed to say is not controversial? So that, all that's to say is I would love for us to have an executive session to hear what our legal options are before we make a decision. I would also like to request that we don't put things like this on the consent agenda, but that we have our options laid out before us before we get to this point. And as far as this particular contract goes, I'd like to ask for a deferral till after an executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. And I know we've talked about this before, but it's in our policy that any contract, every contract that's over $50,000 must go on the consent agenda. So we can update our policy, but it's certainly not that anyone is trying to hide anything. That's just the way our policy is written, and so it had to be mandated. It can always be pulled off, and then yes, we can hear from Metro Legal to understand if we have to have an executive session, or if we can simply have the conversation on the board floor and have different options presented, because I know there is a timestamp. There's a deadline for this contract because it came in so late from the state. I don't even know what all the information is. Go right ahead, Mrs. Masters.
You're probably going to tell us this, but what is that deadline?
So I was going to say, pursuant to the Tennessee Constitution, it's our understanding that we have 60 days to appeal the commission's decision, 60 days from the date that the order was entered by the commission. It was entered June 28th, so that'd be August 28th, I believe, that the board has to make a decision on the approval.
So we could pull it off to simply have a conversation about it at a later date in August. We could vote to simply deny it or approve it, and if we denied it, then that would start the appeal process again.
So what I'll say is my understanding is the board's options today are approval of the contract or deferral.
Okay.
Essentially, what the commission has given us is akin to a court order to approve the consolidated charter agreement.
So we cannot even deny the charter?
It's our understanding that the board does not have the option at this time to deny the charter agreement.
Give it that. Go right ahead, Mrs. Masters.
I move that we defer the discussion to our first August meeting, just to give the board more time to understand all the ins and outs of it, since we did receive the information very late, and it sounds like that's not going to affect the deadline.
Thank you.
I have a question. Okay, so with the commission, I just want to make sure that we are clear on the commission's decision. Explain what that looks like. So we defer because this was back in June, right? The last week in June, so we're, we're already going, you know, forward on the, on the timeline, right? So it's not from this date forward as far as 60 days for an additional appeal.
So the 60 days would be from the June 28th date that the commission entered its order, which again, I believe is August 28th.
Point of order. I had a motion.
My apologies. My apologies. Okay, if you can repeat your motion, and then we can have the second, and then we can open back up to discussion. All right, go ahead.
I move that we defer the deeper discussion of this contract and then the consideration of approval to our first August meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We'll open for discussion. Go right ahead, Mrs. Bush.
Start again, Fran. I know, you're good, you're good. Okay, so what is the rule? What's the law? I want you to break down the law of what we're doing right now. Is it appropriate to do what we're doing, and is it is appropriate to defer it? I just want to make sure we're clear on the law.
So the commission has issued, remanded it back to the board to issue the approval of the consolidated charter agreement. Pursuant to the Tennessee Constitution, the board has 60 days to appeal that decision, and essentially, we'd be extend, the deferral would be within that 60-day period of the opportunity to appeal the decision.
And if it goes back to, before the commission for that appeal, you all are going to be doing the appeal process, right?
So if, at this stage, it would not, the appeal would not be, again, to the commission, it would be to Chancery Court. So I may have been unclear on that. It's not an appeal to the commission, it's an appeal to Chancery Court, I believe.
And so why does it go to the Chancery Court?
Because the commission has issued their decision, so it would be appeal of their decision, essentially.
And Metro Legal will appeal that, will go before the Chancery to appeal the commission's decision.
If that's the board's decision, it would, yes, Metro Legal would be handling that matter.
And my last question, what is the likelihood that the Chancery Court will side with Metro Legal, or I'm sorry, the board, based on the commission's recommendation?
My understanding is this timeline has given time to have an executive session, and just given that this is, we're discussing litigation rather than just timelines, it's probably more appropriate to address it in an executive session, if that's, the board wants that analysis.
Okay, yep.
Why are we just giving...
Mrs. Masters.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that I, too, had not had the time to look at this thoroughly, to ask the questions I had to ask, and would love the opportunity to do that in an executive session, just to be sure I'm not asking anything that's inappropriate for a public forum.
Mr. Little.
So the, the question is, why are we getting it at this time and putting, I guess, the board in the predicament of making a quick decision or deferral, but also as parents, as we get close to August, I don't know how many parents have signed their kids up to attend the school for this August due, and it's not a legal question, but I guess it's a metro question. Do we know how many parents are, have currently signed their kids up to attend, because I think this goes into account with what we want to see, but also what parents are expecting as they get ready for August, because this is a decision that we take that will deal with the new school year.
Well, I'll, I'll say that I don't have those numbers exactly. Believe it may have been in the executive director's report on the matter. That being said, the commission, this charter commission did not issue their decision till June 28th. So we're working on abbreviated timelines.
June 28th, right. Thank you.
And the other thing is, again, we only have the option to approve or defer, but not to deny. So again, our policy process states that whenever we get this information, it immediately goes on a consent agenda. It cannot come via any other form, and so I appreciate you all just pulling them off, but this is why we have the conversations, and we can make whatever decision moving forward that we would like. So that being, oh, go ahead, Mr. Little.
My only question is, I think we, we have a decision to make, and we need more information, but also as we put our mindset as a parent, when you're thinking about what does a school, what does a new school year look like coming up in August, I think these decisions matter to them. That's why I wanted to know. And I think it was around maybe 110, maybe 200 families who have made the decision to send their kids to KA, and I think our decisions dictate the direction that they have, and if we don't approve, then they may have to make another decision. Well, let me ask you this, will the school be able to open in August if we don't make a decision tonight?
I, I can't speak to that. That's more logistics than legal, and frankly, I think it'd be a question for presumably Knowledge Academy in conjunction with the Charter Office.
Yeah, that's, that's my biggest question. I think we have a debate, but I also think that community who is, has signed up to send their kids, like, I want to make sure we're taking their viewpoint into this conversation around like August, like, what will they do if we don't make a decision and they, they don't have a school to go to?
So my understanding structurally where we are at this moment is that we have this question of the contract that's before the board. Currently, Knowledge Academy does have two charters in operation, and that would be KA Crossings and KA High School, which I believe have a total enrollment of 700 students, and I think they have around 550 enrolled.
520, I'm looking at it. They only have 520 enrolled at the moment, according to the state document.
But again, so I'm clear, there's, there's no way to deny the contract anyway, like, the school will be, will remain in existence no matter what we decide. We just have to unpack and understand more about what this contract decision will be. So no matter what, if parents chose the school, they'll be allowed to go.
So...
But we're talking logistics?
Structurally, there's the approval, and the deferral would be to give the time the, excuse me, the board time to explore its options.
Okay.
And...
So there could be other things that happen?
Yeah.
Based on the information that we get? Okay.
In the executive discussion, executive session, excuse me, we'd be discussing the litigation options, and I would not want to speculate how litigation would pan out at this stage.
Okay.
Okay. I have something. Being, this is my school in my district, I need to know answers. Is this going to affect the students from this, from being able to attend for the school year, or is this just a, a process of this, this application of going through supposedly the appeal process? So, kind of better explain this.
Sure.
Okay.
This is from my recollection, I think both KA, the Crossings, and KA Middle School had about 120 students enrolled at the time, so, or KA Crossings had 120 students enrolled at the time, or, sorry, excuse me, let me stop, I misspoke. KA Middle School had 120 students enrolled. KA, at the Crossings, had the ability to enroll those students. That was at the time of the renewal. I cannot speak to any further enrollment they may have done in the meantime.
I just heard 520, is that what you...
Yeah, and that includes, that, so we, they asked us to give them a new 10-year charter agreement for their middle school only, and we denied that. And so, but before we denied that, we made sure that if those students still wanted to go to a KA school, were there spots available for them in the existing structure? And the answer was yes. So in their existing structure, there are enough seats for everybody who was at that closed middle school to go, and for the students who are, who are already there to continue to go there. They just want the option of having more seats. It's not going to affect the number of students who are there at this time.
I know, thank you. I was there, yes, I was there. I think my question is, and I think I want to make it clear for my constituents, my families, that because we're going through this process, like Christian had mentioned, it doesn't matter, either we're going to approve it, or we're going to defer it, then we go into a lawsuit, if that's what's going to happen when we talk about in an executive session. So really, my point, my, my, my stance is, these students will still be going... So really, my point, my, my stance is, these students will still be going, being able to go to school in August, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the thing.
I think there's, currently across the whole network, which includes at this point, K A Crossings and K A High School, there's 550 students. My understanding is the total enrollment for K A Crossings is about, I think it's 400. And there were 100, there were 120 essentially in each K A Crossings and K A Middle School previously. So that would total about 240 students in K A Crossings when their enrollment at this stage is 400, I believe.
Okay, so.
Approximate numbers.
Not talking about enrollment, I'm talking about making sure that students are going to be able to attend, right? So my next question is, they can't stop the consolidation. Because if we go through the appeal process, they're still able to run the school regarding what the commission has already decided. Is that correct or not?
It would be depending on the litigation and how that would play out.
Okay.
Which is why we need to know our options.
Yeah, I think given that we, I totally agree, and I'm glad to know children won't be displaced as a result of us putting off this conversation. So I feel even more confident in my motion at this point around that. So I'm going to call the question.
I didn't have one more question.
All right, well, hold on, we, since she's called the question, we need a two-thirds vote to pass, to move on and vote. All in favor of making the vote, raise your hand. Five, four, all against, one against. All right, let's go ahead and move the motion, I'm sorry. Calling the question has been appropriately done. We'll go ahead and repeat your motion so we can vote on that.
I move that we defer discussion, or defer the vote on this item to our first August board meeting.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that's five, all against, two. All right, motion passes. We'll move on to 118 Nashville State Community College. Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, it just has a, at the funding spot, it has a TBD. Just wanted to know if we have an update on where that money's coming from.
I will speak to that. On the version that I have, it actually has not applicable on the funding source. And the reason being, this is a zero dollar for the contract for MNPS. The funding is actually covered as part of Nashville State Community Colleges matched to the grant for that.
All right, that's great. Well, then I move to accept.
All right, all in favor, please, I'm sorry, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is 7-0. All right, we will now move on to amended charter school applications. This is Robi Grant.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Robi Grant, Director of Charter Schools for Metro Schools. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Director Battle, thank you for the opportunity to share the Charter Office Review Team's reports on four New Start amended charter applications. This evening, we will present the findings of the New Start amended applications for Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II, Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School II, Saber STEM Academy, and Tennessee Nature. On April the 26th, 2022, the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education voted to deny the New Start applications for the following sponsors. Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II, a proposed K-4 school with an enrollment cap of 600 students. Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School II, a proposed 5-8 school with an enrollment cap of 528 students. Saber STEM Academy, a proposed K-8 school with an enrollment cap of 396 students. And Tennessee Nature Academy, a proposed 5-12 school with an enrollment cap of 684 students. TCA 49-13-108-3B states, upon receipt of the grounds for denial, the sponsor has 30 days from receipt to submit an amended application to correct the deficiencies. The local Board of Education has 60 days from receipt of an amended application to deny or approve the amended application. The MNPS Office of Charter Schools received four New Start amended applications. The board has the following voting options for the applications received. Approve or deny each New Start amended application. Please note, a denial on any New Start amended application can be appealed to the Charter Commission within 10 calendar days. The Office of Charter Schools leads the authorization process by sharing evidence findings reports with the Board of Education for New Start applications, renewal applications, and amendments to existing contracts. TCA 49-13-116 states that the state law and regulation require the Tennessee Department of Education to provide a standard application format and scoring criterion addressing the elements of the charter school application. The board can consider the review team's findings and whether each New Start amended application should be approved or denied. State law requires each charter application must be considered and voted on separately. The review and rating of the New Start amended applications consisted of a variety of members from multiple MNPS departments that included academics, special populations, facilities planning, strategic investments, operations, teaching and learning, an external reviewer, and the divisions of schools. MNPS review team members rated each of the sections for each New Start amended application that did not meet the standard or partially met the standard in the original submission. The categories for possible review consisted of academics, operations, financials, and past performance. We will begin with the New Start amended application for Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II. Kip Southeast College Prep Elementary School II is proposing a K-4 elementary school with an enrollment cap of 600 students in the southeast area of Davidson County. I will highlight a few of the evidence findings listed within the board report and are as follows. In academics, on page seven of the amended application, it indicated that Kip believes that locating the school in the Antioch or Cambridge communities will benefit both the students in that area to ease overcrowding. Based on the K-5-6-8 structure of MNPS reimagined, the projections show there is no issue of overcrowding in the Antioch and Cambridge clusters. The amended application did not address the original concern of the application type of category two, which requires a change in grade level structure or focus outlined in the TDOE rubric provided to applicants and utilized by evaluators, thus not showing the category two criterion outlined in the application. The amended application did provide language that included current English learners terminology. In operations, the application recommendations exceeded TCA 49-1-104 state law violating class size requirements. In addition, the application included information in the success of incubating Kip Antioch College Prep Elementary School within Intrepid High School. In financials, the amended application clarified that debt service included in the budget was for the new building and not to service existing debt. Also, the pre-opening budget did not include required instructional space and furniture costs. In past performance, recommendations were not addressed in the appropriate amended application section following the provided guidelines. Additionally, Kip elementary schools have not consistently outperformed in consecutive years in comparison to MNPS schools. The review team determined the rating for Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II as follows. Partially meets the standard in academics, partially meets the standard in operations, does not meet the standards in financials, and partially meets the standard in past performance. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the New Start amended application for Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II.
Thank you, Mrs. Robi Grant. All right, do we have a motion on the floor so we can begin discussion?
I move that we deny the application for Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School II on the grounds that it does not meet standards.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're open for discussion. All right, seeing no questions, are all in favor. Right ahead, Ms. Bush.
This will be the elementary middle? Which one is this one?
This is the elementary.
Elementary, okay.
Yes.
And it'd be located on the same?
The middle.
Is it middle that we're doing, or elementary? I thought it was elementary, which one?
All right, with the.
They're out of order in the agenda, I guess. In our agenda, elementary's the second one.
Everything up there, sir.
Oh, okay.
Oh, apologies, I need to amend my motion.
So it is the elementary?
This is the elementary.
Okay, so I made sure, okay.
Neither of them meet standards, so can I amend my agenda? I mean, amend, amend my, my, whatever, motion. I move that we deny the application from Kip Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School II on the grounds that it does not meet the standards.
Now we have, now we have a second. All right, go ahead, Ms. Bush.
Okay, with this particular elementary, it would be on the same grounds as the current one, right? Would it be on the same property?
It will not. It's in, they're, they're anticipating a location in the southeast area.
Okay, for the second one.
Yes.
I think we compared both from the first one as far as not, their scores or their performance was not compared, or was not up to par, or it was, what was your statement about? It was not?
They did not consecutively, in comparison to MNPS schools, outpace MNPS schools.
The current elementary, the current elementary school. How do you determine that? When we, how did you determine that?
They did provide data in the original application. In the original submission, there was data with comparison to surrounding elementary schools within Kirkpatrick's area.
So they, so they provided their own data, right?
Correct.
And how do we compare, how, what data that was used to compare Kip Elementary, the current elementary school, from the traditional schools that are in the area?
The data that they provided in the original submission showed the data for their Kip Kirkpatrick School to surrounding elementary schools within the area.
So they did Kirkpatrick, but they didn't do Antioch?
I have to go back and look at the application to see if Antioch was in that, in that, in the original. But I know Kirkpatrick was, because it's a tested grade as far as ten-ready.
Right, and so I guess I'm a little confused why they wouldn't include their Antioch Elementary as far as a comparison of possibly outperforming the traditional schools that are around the area in the district. Do we know facts about that, surrounding that?
I have to, I can go back and, and look and see.
Okay, because I, I know that particular school is highly performing in the district, the elementary school that's currently in the southeast.
Okay.
I guess I, I mean, I can't really have question, I mean, I have more questions, but that was really important to know tonight. Okay. Kirkpatrick, the elementary school, where is that located?
In East Nashville.
That's in East Nashville.
Yes.
I'm just really confused why they wouldn't add, or I want to know if they added the Antioch location, because it is really highly performing in that, in the district.
I have to check to see if they had a tested grade at the Antioch location, because they haven't been opened that long. So they may not have had ten-ready scores for those tested grades for the Antioch school. So I just, I want to verify that before I give you that information.
Okay.
It was compared to tested as far as ten-ready scores. And Kip Kirkpatrick has ten-ready scores that you can compare them to. But I do want to confirm first, I don't believe they had tested grades for ten-ready for the Antioch, but I do want to confirm that.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Elrod, did you have your hand up? Mrs. Elrod and then Mr. Little.
Thank you. My concerns are also surrounding that there's not a need for the school in the area. We don't need the seats, and that there's no need for overcrowding in that area. Part of my district, of course, includes the Antioch cluster, though that is mostly Ms. Bush's. And I know that we have two new elementary schools being built in that area, they're in my district. And there's also supposed to be a middle school being built inside of Ms. Bush's district right on the edge, which would benefit both of our districts. My concerns are, if we open these schools, that it will create an issue where we don't have those seats. We don't need those seats, because those seats are already being provided through the public schools that are already unavailable and that are being built there. Do we have the current projections for any of those schools? I know it said that we don't have a need because there's no overcrowding. Are we showing that there's no projections for overcrowding for the next several years, or just in recent years?
Ryan is going to come up and speak more to the projections.
I figured that was a Ryan question. Thank you, Ryan. I saw you back there.
You're welcome. Ms. Elrod, yes. The enrollment for the next few years is probably going to remain relatively around where it is. We've got the schools that you've already mentioned planning. Rocket Ship III is also opening up a state-run school in that area. And Nashville Collegiate Prep is also in that area and has not built out yet.
And Advent, am I saying it correct? Adventura? As an, and then we have another charter school that's being opened, so sorry, within that area as well. Is that correct? So we have several other schools being opened?
Right.
Okay, along with the two that I mentioned in District Two. So with, in consideration of what's already going to be available, if there was to be any overcrowding, we have already taken care of those within the seats available.
That's correct.
Okay. I don't, in general, want to be in competition with schools within our own district for seats, nor for teachers. So that's a concern for me. Of course, there's also concerns that are found within the evidence here. And it also doesn't meet our policy, policy 1.900 for charter school applications for need within high-stakes areas. So I will be voting to deny based upon those things. Thank you. All right, Mr. Little.
Hey, Ms. Robi, thank you for doing such a wonderful job. Like, I know coming up here and like, getting peppered with questions can be kind of hard. My only question is, how do we determine parent feedback? Like, as we have a public discussion tonight, as we listen from parents from Oliver and Tennessee Nature Academy, you realize, like, parent feedback is really important. And I think what the review committee has is looking at, you know, as you look at the facts and you make your judgment on what you believe is needed and based on the rubric. But can it also create or bring some type of, like, parent feedback? Because, I mean, the little bit of information that I heard just from parents in Antioch, whether it's district or just people who live in the community, they really enjoy the school. And so is there ever a time where we can have, based on the rubric, hearing from parents, whether it's email or social media or one-on-one, just, just to get a different perspective on what we may not see, what may be needed? It may be safety issues, it still may be overcrowding. I heard one kid talk about 39 to a classroom. But I think it just takes us out of the box and just like, well, this is what we confirmed in our committee, but this is also what we hear from the community, and let's kind of combine it so we can make a decision based on, as professionals, but also like the community.
Great question. And parent and community feedback is included within the academic section of the application where applicants can submit letters of support as it relates to them opening up their, their school. And so some applications do provide those particular examples, and review members can consider that within the application when it's submitted.
Right, and I saw that in there, but has it taken into account before? Right, and, and I saw that in there, but has it taken into account before the presentation on whether you, and I don't know how, I, I forget how we do it now because we just changed it, but I think it used to be like we approve or we not approve, I think it's different now, but how does that feedback based on their submission factor into the decision of the review members?
Review members just utilize the rubric, and so if it is part of the criteria outlined in that particular section, they take that in consideration as they provide the overall rating for that section. As you know, there is a meets, partially meets, and does not meet of each section, and so within the academic section, the section that does offer opportunity for applicants to provide, um, s- uh, evidence of support for the application, each review member can take that in consideration as they are rating that particular section.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush.
What is the current capacity of our elementary schools in southeast, in the district?
Hi, Ms. Bush, uh, the Antioch cluster, uh, the projections next year have us at around thirty-eight hundred, and we've got forty-three hundred seats, so we're at about eighty-seven percent. For the middle schools, about eighteen hundred students and twenty-three hundred stu- uh, seats, so about seventy-seven percent. For Kane Ridge, we're at about eighty-four percent of capacity for the elementary schools, and for the middle schools, we're at eighty-five percent.
And when, um, thank you for that, um, when, when are the, when did they propose to open? What is their proposal if they get approved to open?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so twenty-three, twenty-four. We have over fifteen thousand apartment homes that are being built right now. How do you come up and gauge the families that are going to be living there and the amount of space we will have based on the projections of this many apartments being built in the Antioch and Kane Ridge cluster?
So we kind of look at, we, each year we map all of our kids, and we look at what type of housing they're in, and then we can kind of get a rate, so as new housing comes online, how many kids with that type of housing tend to generate? Those numbers are much lower than most people expect. So it's kind of that old perception of you see a house and you think it's a couple with two point four kids and a dog, and it's, it's often a lot, lot less than that now.
Do we have more kids now that are living in apartments that are, that are ten MNPS?
I would have to take a look at that, I think we probably still have more families living in single-family housing, and then kind of migrating towards what I would call single-family attached, so townhomes and that kind of housing.
Okay, can you take a look at that? Because right now, we're, we're itching, we're inching up, even with the twenty-two going into twenty-three school year, and that area, Antioch and Kane Ridge, is growing at over a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent out there, because not only do we have apartment homes that are still being built, that are not even occupied yet, and then we have so many other subdivisions that are being built, as you say, townhomes, et cetera. So I want to make sure that we are intentional, making sure that we're going to have these type of seats open for our students or new students that will be coming in. So that's why I'm asking, how do you do your projections? Because I live there.
The other?
And I'm, I see all of the development going on, so it worries me, because I think we're going to be over capacity at some point within the next one to two years.
The, the other thing to factor in there is that most of the projection work starts with kindergarten, so it's looking at how many kids were born five years back.
You know, that's not something you can predict nowadays, right? You just can't predict it, because people are coming in from all over the country, moving to our area, so you, we don't, we can't gauge those new students' births or their ages, because they're coming with multiple children. And I know that because I have three daycares that I'm filling up pretty quick, because all these families are coming with multiple children. So that's what worries me, because when they exit out of my program, we got three children that are back-to-back that are going to go into the elementary school. So you really can't project on how they're being born, because they're coming into the city in Nashville, in our district, that it's moving pretty quickly on, um, the amount of congestion that we do have in our area. So that's, I worry a little bit about how your, these projections are happening, because I do fear that we're going to be up on enrollment within the next one to two years, especially with what I'm seeing now with the numbers.
Okay.
But I want you to take a look at that, and please email me and let me know about, because I, I don't even know if you know about the, all the development going on in the area, on how we're going to look, you know, in the next one, one to two years.
We have a pretty good gauge on it. We work closely with Metro Planning, and this year we bought some outside vendor data that supplements that with, uh, market trends and actual locations of the housing that's being developed, and kind of how many lots are going to be planned, how many are under construction, and how many are occupied.
I would like to see that.
Okay.
That'd be great, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. I hope this doesn't require Ryan to get back up here. You should probably just come anyways. I know in the past when we've discussed seats and the seat requirements, as it's been a concern of mine, particularly in the southeast Nashville area, um, that we don't just base it upon the current birth rate, but also based upon historical context of what we've seen for influx of population, because that's not just a new issue within our city, but an ongoing. It's my understanding from past data and conversations is that we do have an influx of, um, population within Nashville, but it's typically a younger population that do not have young children inside of our schools. And so that's part of the reason why we see housing developments, be them apartments, single-family homes or otherwise, that have significantly less students than we are expecting. So I want to make sure I'm correct and that I haven't typed this up incorrectly in my own notes. When we go through and look at all the historical data that we have, particularly, it's my understanding that we've, doing it more because of the reimagined work, do we just consider birth rates, or do we consider current patterns and moving, and what kind of families are moving into that area? And within Metro Planning, are we aware of not just what, what's being built now, but what are the future plans in those areas?
Yes. So just to give you a little bit more details on it, we do start with birth rates, we then look at capture rates, so how many of those people that are born in the city go on to become an MNPS student or a kindergarten student in a public school? And that rate has been declining a little bit over the past few years. So that kind of starts it, and then we project out from there. We look at four years of mobility, so how many students kind of come into a zone and kind of leave a zone? And then that kind of sets the, the trends up. Then we factor in, as, as Ms. Bush just mentioned, the new developments and kind of the number of students we, we expect from those. And then that kind of gives us our number of students per zone, so to speak, and then we kind of break down that further, and we look at historical trends on how many of those kids go on to a MNPS school, how many go on to a charter school, how many go on to an MNPS magnet school? And then we kind of plug in all those percentages and get the five-year projections.
I, it's my understanding that with our reimagined work, because we are doing a lot of work within the support hub and within individual schools to try to move and realign our grade levels in each building, that we're kind of watching this more than ever, per se, because we have so many different moving parts of moving grades and such. Am I correct, and Ryan, this probably is not a question for you, am I correct in remembering within this application for KIP Elementary 2, that they are not following the newer, new reimagined levels of grades? That they are following the, what we currently have, not what we are trying to, to get to?
Correct, they are still under the K, they are requesting still the K4 structure and not the K5, which is what our MNPS schools are realigning to.
Okay, so if their students got, graduated from fourth grade, their students would still go, in this situation, they'd go to, uh, MNPS school that's got, still an elementary school, they'd go to a fifth-grade classroom and, an MNPS classroom, unless they continued in within the KIP facilities, where it stays within their model of K4, 5, 8, and so on.
Correct, if they opt to go to an MNPS school, they would have to transfer to another elementary for fifth grade.
Okay. Not ideal. Thank you.
Another question, um, because they already have their model set that they offer fifth grade, is that correct? So it's southeast, they offer fifth grade, um, already, so that, just wanted to get clarification on that, which I know that, because I'm there. Also, uh, when it comes to the apartment homes that was just spoken about, we all know that real estate is very scarce right now as far as single-family homes. So there's no inventory, so that's the reason why we have an influx of apartment homes that are going up in the Antioch Kane Ridge area, because there's not a lot of inventory. So I just wanted to make sure I made that clear, that we have more families that are living in apartment homes than single-family homes currently. I know that, because I live there, and I have families that live there in apartment homes, because they cannot buy a home in that area. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear as far as the number of apartments that are serving our students. They stand out on a bus stop in front of the apartments, I see it every single day. So we have more families that are living in apartment homes than we've ever seen before right now, because of how scarce the housing market is. So I just wanted to make that statement. Okay?
And I do just want to note that those two KIP schools that we're referencing are state-run KIP schools in Antioch.
I don't, I didn't say anything about it being state-run, I said, I know they have fifth grade, from fourth to fifth grade on their campus.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, we will move forward with the motion, can you restate yours, Mrs. Masters?
Yeah, I move that we deny this application, um, based on the grounds that it doesn't, um, meet eligible standards.
All right, Mrs. Player, are you still with us? All right, the motion has been restated, all in favor, please, all in favor of denial of the amended application, please raise your hand. All right, five in support, all against, have two. All right, motion passes, uh, Mrs. Roby, next school, please.
The next new start amended application is KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School 2. KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School 2 is proposing a 5-8 middle school with an enrollment cap of five hundred twenty-eight students in the southeast area of Davidson County. I will highlight a few of the evidence findings listed within the board report and are as follows. In academics, on page seven of the amended application, it indicated that KIP believes that locating the school in the Antioch or Kane Ridge communities will benefit both the students in that area to ease overcrowding. Again, based on the K, the K5-6A structure of MNPS Reimagine, the projections show there is no issue of overcrowding in the Antioch and Kane Ridge clusters. Additionally, the amended application did not address the original concern of the application type of category 2, which requires a change in grade level structure or focus outlined in the TDOE rubric provided to applicants and utilized by evaluators, thus not showing the category 2 criteria outlined in the application. Lastly, the application did not show how fine arts would be incorporated into schedules or curricula. In operations, no school locations were provided in the amended application. Additionally, the, the review team did note that KIP leadership experience exceeds fifteen years in Nashville. In financials, the budget included in the application for teacher-student ratios was incorrect and didn't address accurate ratios as outlined in TCA 49-1-104. In the amended application, evidence was provided indicating that KIP does have a history of financial audits that are acceptable. In past performance, the application did meet the standard during the original new start application submission and was not reviewed in the new start amended application process. The review team determined the ratings for KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School 2 as follows: partially meets the standard in academics, partially meets the standard in operations, partially meets the standard in financials, and past performance was not rated due to it meeting the standard in the original submission. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new start amended application for KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School 2.
All right, do we have a, a motion? Mrs. Tyler?
I, I move to deny KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School 2 based on the reasons detailed in the charter school report.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, open for discussion.
I'll just call for the vote.
Okay, uh, all in, all in favor of denial of the amended?
Because I know we're supposed to, oh.
Oh, he, he called for the vote, so let's have a vote, whether we want to call for it.
I didn't hear you, I apologize.
All right, all in favor of calling for the vote, ending discussion? We have five, all right, motion passes, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, denial? That's five, all right, all against? Two. All right, thank you, Mrs. Roby Grant, next application.
We will now move to the new start amended application for Saber STEM Academy. Saber STEM Academy is proposing a K8 school with an enrollment cap of three hundred ninety-six students in the southeast area of Davidson County. I will highlight a few of the evidence findings listed within the board report and are as follows. In academics, Kurdish-speaking students have declined nine percent over the last four years in MNPS. The declining numbers mean that a school cannot rely on Kurdish-speaking students for consistent enrollment. The review team determined that the application does not adequately distinguish STEM curriculum and integrate it into academics for linguistically diverse students. In operations, there was no clarity on the relationship between Salmon Community Services CMO and Education Management and Network CMO, which would be a potential conflict of interest due to members serving on both, on both CMOs. Also, there are concerns around how a network located in Michigan would be able to support a school in Nashville. Additionally, the architectural timeline indicated within the amended application is not adequate as it relates to securing permits, as well as the implementation of the construction completion dates, which would jeopardize an on-time start to school for students. In financials, the amended application provided some financial data and analysis for schools within the existing network. However, the amended application indicates a reliance on state and federal funds and no contingency plan due to a lack of state and federal funding. Lastly, in past performance, Salmon Network operates schools in the Michigan area. However, several schools in the network chose to terminate their contractual agreement with Education Management and Network CMO to enter into a new contract with other educational service providers. The review team determined the rating for Saber STEM Academy as follows: does not meet the standard in academics, does not meet the standard in operations, does not meet the standard in financials, and partially meets the standard for past performance. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new start amended application for Saber STEM Academy.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor for Saber STEM Academy? Mrs. Tyler?
I move to deny Saber STEM Academy based on the reasons detailed in the charter school report.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, open for discussion? All right, seeing none, are all in favor, please raise your hand. It doesn't look like we have, oh, we do have Mrs. Player, all right? That's six, six in favor of the motion, are all against?
I'm going to abstain.
All right, no, against, one abstention, Mrs. Bush. All right, thank you, Mrs. Roby Grant.
We have reached our last new start amended application. We will now review Tennessee Nature Academy. Tennessee Nature Academy is proposing a 5-12 school with an enrollment cap of six hundred and eighty-four students in the southeast area of Davidson County. I will highlight a few of the evidence findings listed within the board report and included as follows. In academics, the amended application did include examples of co-planning as well as co-teaching. However, there was no evidence to support intensive intervention to meet students' needs, which would limit access and support to the diverse student populations. While the applicant indicated on page- While the applicant indicated on page 13 of the amended application that they would address the need in the southeast area of middle and high school capacity approaching or exceeding 100%, based on the K-5, 6, 8 structure of MNPS Reimagine, the projections show there is no issue of overcrowding in the Antioch and Cambridge clusters. In operations, student-to-teacher ratios continue to be out of compliance at 27, exceeding the class-size average of 25 required by state law TCA 49-1-104. Additionally, TNA's unique structure raises challenges related to accessibility for students with disabilities who make up 13.25% of MNPS students, which would also limit access to TNA's school choice option for this population of students. In financials, the startup budget did not include any rental costs for facilities. The pre-opening budget includes no funds for tenant improvements. The eight-year budget includes only one $20,000 allocation for a single outdoor classroom. This equates to roughly $2,500 per year to support a single classroom in which the application's focus of learning through with and from nature. Overall, the review team felt the budget is not adequate and lacks depth in supporting the fulfillment of the applicant's vision and mission. Lastly, in past performance, the applicant is considered a category 1 and this section was not reviewed or rated by review team members. The review team determined the ratings for Tennessee Nature Academy as follows: partially meets the standard in academics, partially meets the standard in operations, does not meet the standard in financials, and NA for past performance due to the applicant being a category 1. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the New Start amended application for Tennessee Nature Academy.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Roby Grant. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Tennessee Nature Academy tonight.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, open for discussion.
I'm going to go first.
I'm sorry. I just think about, as I listen to public participation and mainly what I've, what I've asked Ms. Roby, like I've seen students, parents, administrators all come up and really support the school. I've watched their leader as I walk into the school board be outside demonstrating. And what you really need in a school is, is commitment from leadership, community support, and just the ability to be able to manage and get kids to where they need to be academically, but also culturally. And so that's the reason I wanted to, after listening to public participation, after seeing students, teachers, and other people who support the school really be out front, I want to make sure this is what we, we represent as we also hear parents who may be dissatisfied with their education experiences. It'd be very hard to turn down a school who, and I've read the report, but also what I've heard in public discussion, I appreciate we have it, is that a lot of that is, is wrong. And then I get into the feeling of, well, do I follow the charter committee review? Is there an opportunity for discussion? Or do I listen to members of that, that team who have objections? So I find myself wanting to crossroads with that because I don't have the ability to decipher, which I should, which is correct, is it the review committee or did the school really report out what was really needed? And so for that reason, I would love to hear, but I, I know we, we may not have that opportunity. But based on the students I heard, the, the one student who, I, I forgot his name, but it really convicted me coming up and speaking on behalf of his younger sibling and why he supports the school and the summer activities. I just think it, it's hard to deny something when you hear the community outright speaking on behalf of it and supporting it.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Bush?
There's, there's several things that I'm concerned with as far as the, the number of team members that came up tonight and spoke about some of the things that were not accurate in the findings. And I will tell you, if we know Mr. Renfro, he has a soft bone always in his body. And when he came up tonight and he was very frustrated, you normally don't see that from him. And he had to be frustrated for a reason. And he also, and not just him, but other members of the committee, also stated the very same thing, that they were frustrated that we, I received this three-page report basically disputing what was found or what wasn't found or was not done accurately inside this application. And they pointed out specifics. And so I'm a little concerned about what their concerns are. Mr. Renfro has been the teacher in our community for a long time, and these students that he helped, you know, support in this type of studies and academia that he's trying to present into the district and, and making sure that kids learn through nature and making sure, because all of these students are so compassionate, and that's the kind of students we definitely want to continue to produce in, in life. And so it kind of worries me that the number of people from the committee came up and said, no, this is not right. This is, we did present this information. And they pointed out page numbers, they pointed out section numbers. And so I'm just a little concerned about the findings. So for example, they had said, for example, the algebra and the statistics that wasn't offered for the, let's see, yeah, was not offered. 1.3 of the application, do you have the application with you?
I do, I do not have it in front of me.
So they named several things that I worry about because they pointed out different sections that were not correct that they did add. So it was really hard for, as far as a board member sitting here listening to them dissect what was put into their application, and yet we're saying that that was not accurate. We got, I wish that you all would bring this information before us so that we'll, we'll be able to, be able to decipher if that information was presented or not.
So I do want to respond to that. Couple of things. As far as review team members, we have members that are chosen that are experts in, in specific areas. So first, we make sure that if you are reading a section, that's your area expertise. Second, what is different from the original submission for the amended is any information that you would like the review team to take into consideration for the amended application must be highlighted. We provide this guidance to all applicants when the original submission vote is determined and we follow up. So some of that information may not have been highlighted in the amended application. And so review team members do not read sections that are not highlighted to show that changes were made to that particular section. I don't have the application in front of me, so I can't speak to the specifics regarding the algebra. But the process that the amended application consists of is reading highlighted changes that were not included in the original submission.
So I find that hard to believe, I'm sorry, because I know how detailed they were as far as the application. So if anything that was highlighted, I am sure anybody in this room, if we got something highlighted that's wrong, and we know we got that red marking that we used to see when we got points taken off from our papers, you know, we got to pay attention to that. So I'm, I'm really, and because you don't have the application to be able to prove that information, it's really hard. And some of the board members may already have their minds made up, but it's not fair that they're saying they did this information. This is not the first, second, third time I've heard this from these charter, charter applications, that eventually we get it wrong and then go to the state and of course they appeal it, and then they were right, just like with the K-8 thing. I mean, we were totally wrong with, on K-8, and the commission came back and said, you all were wrong in all these three sections. So it's just really hard for me. I just want to make sure we're being fair because what they're stating, you can't prove. Like for example, another example, it was stated that they didn't have EE and EL. And yet they saying, yes, we do, we have one at each grade level. But yet you cannot show us that because you don't have it with you. It's just really hard not having information and documentation to back up the expertise that you're talking about. So I'm, I'm really struggling with that. That's my comment.
All right, Mrs. Elrod, then Mrs. Tyler. All right.
Okay. I mean, if anyone has been hard on the review and evaluation process historically, it's probably been me. So my concerns historically with the review and evaluation process have been that it is historically geared favorably towards charter schools, doesn't necessarily match up with our standards and those kinds of things. We have discussed several times, both on this board floor and in board retreats about this process of getting the entire application, and I want to make sure that that process is still the same. I'm not making an assumption about that. So if we want to see the entire application that is available to us.
Yes.
And if we would like to attend any of those meetings or be involved in those, we can do that too if we so choose.
We don't talk.
But we were discouraged against doing it in the past. Because I asked that.
I believe legally we can, but you can't be involved in the process. Like you can be there to sit and watch, but it's not...
You can basically observe.
Yeah, you can observe it, it's not ideal.
Okay.
I, I'm not aware of the specific law on point, but I can research that and provide that to the board.
Okay. It's my understa... If I remember correctly, though, it was some months ago in that discussion, it was if we wanted to be an observant, if we wanted to observe those things, we could, but we could not, of course, give vote conversations, conversations within that. But we can see the entire application. It's available to us. We typically do not ever have it at a meeting, so I understand that that's not, I just want, I want to say that I know that that's not you, Ms. Robbie, or Dr. Robbie Green, it's, that's... Roby Green, thank you. I'm having a difficult time with names. Roby Green. Thank you. So I understand that's not you, it's just something that we typically don't have inside of our entire board meetings because we have the summary. It is difficult for me to say that I don't believe a summary now, but I believe all the other summaries. That would show a partisan belief in how that process is held and the experts that do it within each group. I understand that Tennessee Nature Academy says that there are discrepancies inside of it, and I, though I know we did not take the 10-minute recess as requested, I, I have reviewed them, and I can see that there's some confusion here. My assumption is that, as maybe suggested, it is potentially because there was a misstep in the highlighted portion being on or off. What I do know for sure, which is not discussed as a point that is incorrect or suggested to be incorrect, is that the seats are not needed in that area. As much as I think Tennessee Nature Academy sounds interesting, and it is not lost on me that Mr. Renfro is quite passionate about it and very energized. I, I see. I, it is concerning to me that the seats are simply not needed. And in our district, my goal is to do what's best for all of our students, not just some students. So it, I, I think that it's not necessary for us to have the school. It is not currently in our strategic plan to have this type of school. We currently already have other schools that are being built in that area again, and so we don't need the seats. So that is my concern with us adding not just Tennessee Nature Academy, but any schools within that area. Specifically, though, I do think that we need to focus on what's inside of our current report findings, as that's what we have done with all other schools. If we want to start having those applications in advance, I think that's a reasonable request to ask for, but they are available to us. And, yeah, based on our reimagined work and the lack of additional seats needed, I, I cannot support Tennessee Nature Academy.
All right, Mrs. Tyler?
Well, I have to echo Ms. Elrod in saying that our job is to look what's best for all students in MNPS and not just some. And on, on that note, I want to again reiterate my personal support for sustainability in every single MNPS school and for nature-based learning in every single MNPS school, not in one who have families that are able to travel or able to navigate the system or able to provide the transportation necessary, but something that's available for the kids whose families may not be involved or may not want to leave their zone school. So I, I have a deep desire for MNPS to do better with sustainability and to do better with our nature education, all of the things that are, we heard about lowering blood pressure by increasing reading scores, increasing math, those are all true. And I want those to, I want that to be available for every single MNPS student, not just the ones who go to one school. And so I think, one, Ms. Bugs, I would love to ask that you allow me to create this ad hoc committee to do sustainability. I've got the people that are ready to be on it. All you have to do is charge me with creation and I'll be its chair and do it.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Tyler. Interestingly enough, I just recently, recently met with members of the community who wanted to focus on sustainability at Park Avenue, and we're looking through, looking to through the ProCon Cluster YPTO, try to maybe pilot that in that area. So if you're open to it, we will certainly, we can certainly talk about that.
Right.
Other points of discussion? All right, if someone can restate your motion?
I make the motion that we approve Tennessee Nature Academy.
And it was seconded? I'm sorry. Oh, I missed you, my apologies. Go ahead, Mrs. Masters.
I don't know that it's all that helpful. I, I just wanted to say that I, I too, I want to point out that there are lots of actions around sustainability in a lot of our schools, but they are all very school-based. It's that one passionate librarian, that one passionate parent, and so we don't have a structure in place to ensure that it's, that it's district-wide. And I do think that it's important that we get that committee underway, and I'm very appreciative of Board Member Tyler for being willing to head that up, because that's something I think that we should take up district-wide. I don't think that the answer is to, to, I don't think we should be converging these two conversations. You know, there's the issue of sustainability district-wide, and then there's the charter school application that is before us. So, yeah, that, that is what I had to add. I also think it's really important that we trust in the processes that we have and the employees that we have who are working hard to fulfill these responsibilities. I also want to restate that this is a state-mandated process. This isn't MNPS deciding how to review these charter applications. The state tells us how to do this. And it is very much skewed in favor of the charters. So I just think that's something really important for us to consider when we're thinking about the work that goes into putting these, these presentations before us, and that we, we can access the applications as well. So I, I think that's all I had to say.
All right, Mr. Little, would you mind repeating, or restating your motion?
I, I make a motion that we approve Tennessee Nature Academy tonight at the school board.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. We have two in favor. All right, motion fails. I will entertain a second motion.
I move that we decline this application based on the grounds that it doesn't meet standards.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Owe it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have, we need a second?
Deny. I mean, deny.
We have a second. All right, we have a second from Ms. Tyler. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Mr. Marsh, what are our options or next steps?
My understanding is pursuant to 4913-108B3, the board has 60 days within which to either approve or deny. If it is neither approved nor denied within that 60 days, it would be approved as a function of law.
All right, so it sounds like we will need to vote again on this at the first meeting in August. Is there a different timeline for this one?
60 days from when the application which was filed, which I believe was...
May the 26th.
May 26th. May 26th.
Ah, okay.
So I believe that is July 26th.
Mrs. Elrod?
I move that we...
Could you put your mic down?
I move that we vote on this on Thursday at noon.
Okay.
I don't know if Thursday at noon provides enough notice to publicly notice this. I believe...
Fair.
David, you may be able to speak to the public...
Do we need to do it?
We generally require at least a week, is my understanding, to do proper public...
The next Tuesday would be the earliest we should consider. Who is she?
So our public notice policy is kind of situationally dependent. Something of this stature, we would generally say at least a week, I believe would be best practice, that does... We need to make sure that we could have all the right people, certainly you, here at a time, and we've had staff. You know, this is a time when other people have sort of said today is the day they would be here rather than a time next week, but we can work with everybody engaged in the process to find a time between now and the, you know, close of business on the 25th to make that happen.
Okay.
Okay.
I have just kind of a procedural question, and... Tony Marsh, you might be able to under... According to the law, who would be the authorizer of the school?
So for a renewal application pursuant to 1185-01-01.01, it would be... It would go to, if it were to be approved, the MNPS board would be the authorizer. If it were to be denied, the state board would be the authorizer unless the charter school and the MNPS board together determine to move... Proceed forward with a charter agreement within 30 days of the state commission's decision.
Okay. But if it's not approved and it's not denied, then who is the authorizer?
Well, if it's not approved or not denied as of 60 days from the date of the application filing, it would... It is approved by the MNPS board as a function of law.
Okay.
I just think we all need to look at our calendars because we have a number of colleagues that are not here. We don't know about MNPS staff being here. I do understand, though, that we need to give sufficient notice to the community. The different ways that we notice are... Excuse me? I don't know what I need... So again, I know we need to make sure that the community knows what's happening in sufficient time, and I know we have different ways of noticing this. So I don't believe we can set a date today. We will have to set a date. I'll have Dr. Sevier reach out to internal staff, reach out to board members to make sure that we can find a date and then set that and then notice it publicly. For those interested, it would be noticed on the MNPS calendar, and it typically goes out via an email blast as well. All right, so we will publicly notice this and make sure that all parties can be available.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead, Ms.
From my understanding, we can see the applications. There's something we can... We can take a look at the application? Okay. Do you designate that amongst... We can do it by email, or we can...
So David and he'll...
He'll just get it to us? Okay, thank you. How soon can you get that to us since we... Thank you.
Do you need a moment to pull that? How long would it take you to pull an application?
They... We have a electronic version that I can easily just send of the amended, as well as hard copies.
Well, I know some of my colleagues have been here for a number of hours. We could take a few minutes. I apologize for putting you on the spot like this, Mrs. Roby Grant, but if you wouldn't mind taking a few moments, we'll take a break from the meeting, take maybe a five-to-ten-minute break... I'm sorry, a five-to-ten-minute recess, allow you to find that, send it to us electronically. Mrs. Bush, if you're okay with that, then we'll give you a few minutes to read through that, ask your questions, and then we can try to move forward.
Now, let me just ask this question, because I don't want it to be a rush. That's the only thing. And I don't want us to be here all night, like you said. It's going to take a little bit, because I know that some of the language, some of the things that... Because I have never really seen the application, so I want to be able to really thoroughly, and I'm sure other colleagues may want to just be able to dissect it and take a deep dive into it and make sure that we can go through it according to some of the concerns they had in the application. So I would ask, Madam Chair, if we can have that opportunity to review it. Not tonight, because of maybe the time that it may take?
If we don't have any objections, we can just ask Dr. Sevier to poll his staff and board members, and we'll set a time. It might need to be the middle of the day, just so everyone is here, but we'll find a time to do that. Mrs. Grant, if you... I'm sorry, Mrs. Roby Grant, if you wouldn't mind sending that around just at your convenience?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, then that concludes our amended charter school applications. We will now move on to Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, my... Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. I'm going to provide a short overview of our TCAP summary, our TCAP results from this 2021-22 school year. We went over some more detailed data in our teaching and learning meeting today, and I'm just going to give some of the highlights. So we exceeded the state in terms of the improvement we made from 2021 to 2022 in seven categories: English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, which are our three through eight, assessments for Ten Ready, and then our high school end-of-course exams in Integrated Math I, Algebra I, and Geometry. And again, those scores for the first four areas are not just a single test, those are across grade levels. So that's where the vast majority of our students are testing. And we saw more than 33,000 students taking tests in English Language Arts, Math, and Science, and more than 16,000 taking tests in Social Studies, which is in six through eight. In almost every area tested, we saw significant improvement this year, and the increase in proficiency this year surpassed the state in all seven of these areas. But in the 14 areas tested, as we'll see, we... We saw improvement in 13 areas. The Algebra I and Geometry, as mentioned in the earlier meeting today, are administered in our charter schools. We surpassed pre-pandemic levels in terms of the percentage of students hitting the two highest achievement levels, which we now refer to as meeting or exceeding expectations. And we did that in Science, which is three through eight, High School English II, Integrated Math III, and U.S. History. In addition, there were four other subjects where we were within one percentage point of our pre-pandemic performance, and that was three through eight English Language Arts, six through eight Social Studies, High School English I. We... As mentioned in our teaching and learning meeting, it was the impression from many of our national and international experts that this would be a multi-year process to reach these levels where we were back to pre-pandemic proficiency. So we are seeing that in several areas. We still have some work to do, particularly in mathematics, to get back to those levels. But we had some huge gains in math this year. Sorry. And in the next slide, we're just looking at a recap for the year. Again, 13 out of 14 areas, we met or exceeded prior... Well, I'm sorry, we exceeded last year's performance, and when translated into overall performance, we're talking about more than 10,000 student scores that were on track or mastered, as previously identified, meeting or exceeding expectations this year than last year. Now, as you know, frequently, I speak before the board in terms of the what, in terms of the data, how we performed. I usually don't speak to the why, but I know that while it's difficult to isolate any particular initiative, signature initiative, the combination of those initiatives has made some impact, and we were seeing some very significant increases. And these are some of the most critical areas that we believe are addressing our student academic needs, our accelerating scholars, the high-impact tutoring that occurs, the promising scholars, our core curriculum in the adoption of strong academic materials in ELA, and again, our interventions and support, our multi-tiered systems of support, the interventions that we've adopted with those. Again, isolating any individual item is some of the work that we're going to be doing in my department as we evaluate initiatives. Sometimes, as my predecessor in this department described it, it's like trying to unscramble eggs when you have so many things going on at once. But we do have some very specific data that we'll be looking at on some of these initiatives. But it's not just the initiatives. We did it because of the work of the students, teachers, our leaders in schools, our principals, support staff, and families. And, you know, nothing happens unless it happens at those levels at our schools. And with that, Dr. Battle may have additional comments to make, but I'll just say, as someone who's been in front of this board many years looking at assessment data, the improvement we saw this year is beyond what we typically see in a normal year in so many areas.
Thank you for that, Dr. Changis. All right, so I'm looking at this slide deck from the Teaching and Learning Committee for any community member that's looking for a specific district-wide information about ELA proficiency, different grade levels, math proficiency at different grade levels, what our increases look like specifically. You can not only download the slide deck on our website, but you can also see a recap of the 4 o'clock board meeting on YouTube, also on our MNPS website, because this is a great over... Or this is a quick overview, but we have more detailed information that it looks like you all discussed at 4 o'clock.
And as requested in that earlier meeting, we will provide grade-level data as well.
Okay, so I see in some of these it's by grade band or by tier, so middle school or 3A.
Right. And that's how the state has reported it to us.
Right, okay. And then when can families anticipate getting their individual data?
The state has... I'll have to see when the school-level data is going to be released. We've had... We've had the public release of district-level data. I anticipate that should be sometime this month, but as you're probably well aware, there's multiple reports that come out. What we've been looking at so far is the preliminary TCAP data, which is the Ten Ready and then, of course, assessments. It does not include some of the alternative assessments and other information that's going to go into the accountability reporting. The state later this fall will actually release their accountability results, which will have letter grades for schools and designations of various categories. But prior to that, and again, I would anticipate in the next few weeks, we should have school-level data available. And that'll be... That'll be not accountability data, but just the raw assessment data.
So again, MNPS does not... We only have what you all have given us, the way the state reported it, letting us know that as a district we're doing better, but we do not have school-level or individual data yet. But as soon as we do get that raw data, that goes out to families, and we hope or we anticipate that the state will release that by the end of the month.
I'll have to check... We have some data that we have access to, but in terms of embargoes and all of that is what I'll need to look into.
Certainly, that's... Thank you.
And, Ms. Bugs, just to be clear, it... Student-level data in the personalized student dashboard, and some families have received that communication. We've released it ahead of the state release so that our families could have direct access to where their students currently are. So we have released individuals' student performance data.
Thank you for that. All right, Mrs. Elrod, and then Mrs. Tyler.
Thank you. That's what I was about to say. Within that, I do... I can't remember specifics about that communication, and so, Dr. Changis, this is probably not a question for you. I apologize. But my question is, is I know that the language has changed from exceed to... And we have exceed, meet, approaching, and below, and that's new terminology or new phrasing this year from in the past. Within our email blast that we sent out to parents about the parent dashboard, do we explain that new language, or do we have a way to help parents understand what that new language is if they are already accustomed to looking at it and cannot understand the data?
So the interpretive information that's on our website will need to be updated, but I'll have... To be honest, I'm going to have to look to see exactly how it's labeled in our files because we historically have referred to those top two categories as on track or mastered. So we'll need to... We'll need to include some additional information on our website for the interpretation piece.
My... I have heard from some constituents that they were a little confused because they are so used to the on-track and mastered terminology that when they saw the exceeds and meet, it gave them some pause of what is this new terminology? So my hope is that we can explain that somehow, you know, easily, whether it's through the parent dashboard or through our communication with them, but...
And we have not received the printed student reports from the state yet, and I'm anxious to see how those are going to look in terms of that communication. But this, again, the actual standards have not changed, it's just the labels.
Got it. Thank you for your detail from this afternoon in teaching and learning. I appreciate you doing it again with us now as a whole. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Changis. Thank you, Dr. Battle. We appreciate your... Oh, my apologies. Mrs. Tyler?
Can you go back to the slide where you were talking about potential reasons for why things... Yeah, the how we did it slide. That's the one. I just... And I know that you gave us a disclaimer about you don't want to make correlation does not equal causation issues, and so I just really want to kind of push back a little bit on the idea that our teachers aren't even listed on here in the how we did it and that it's in-person learning is not listed in here on how we did it, because I really believe that being back in person was a large point towards helping our students move forward in their learning. I would be really hesitant to say that high-impact tutoring did enough to change it when it was only a pilot program that was not large enough to give us this sample size to know for sure if that's what did it or not. So I think it's a little jumping the gun on that one. I don't... I'm really going to push back on that a lot because we cannot say that our tutor... Unless you have the data.
We don't at this point, but we do... We have been... You know, we are working on that and have external partners assisting. Again, it's... As I tried to say earlier, it's a combination of factors. Where we... Where we did try to emphasize the impact of teachers was on the next slide, and that's really where the greatest impact occurs, and we know that from the research. It happens at the teacher level.
I'm sorry, Paula, but I'll try and hear as well. As you stated, it was clearly stated on this line that we... There is not... None of this is possible, and I think I've said this multiple times since we've been digging into our data. None of this is possible without the hard work of our educators, our teams, our students, of course, and our parents. And so that is consistently communicated and highlighted in the work that we do, but we must also recognize some of the efforts that they have implemented, that they have studied around to make sure that our students are moving in the right direction, making sure that they're equipped with the right resources, materials, of course, training, but there's no replacement of our educators, our great educators, supporting our students and moving them forward. But we also have to identify, because one of our signature initiatives is around our innovative practices and the evaluation of those practices, and so we have been paying attention to what's happening with our curriculum. We have been paying attention to what's happening with our accelerating, our promising scholars, and all the other supports that are in... with our accelerating, our promising scholars, and all the other supports that are in play with intention to increase the outcomes of our students. And there's not one silver bullet, I think we've been clear about that, but it's important to highlight the efforts that we believe that we're seeing in student outcomes that are contributing to student success, so that we can continue to take them to scale. Our goal this year, particularly with our High Doses Tutoring Program, was supporting up to 67,000 students, and we have served thousands of students through our High Doses Tutoring Program. And to be clear, we moved out of our pilot, which was during the 2021 school year, into scaling into our 2223 school year. So it was a full-on, direct, intentional strategy, targeting students who were in need of that individual and small group tutoring. But part of our planning and preparing to implement for the 2223 school year is to recognize those areas of success that we must take to scale in order for this not to be a one-year realization, but a multiple-year realization with regards to student's increase. It is a very challenging thing to do, but we have to realize and acknowledge where those strategies are, so that we can continue to take them to scale. But again, I'll end with what I said in my original communication, what I said in my written communications, as well as this presentation, that there's no replacement to having a high-quality, effective teacher in front of every student, and the collaboration must work across all stakeholders for the good of our students.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, one more thing, and this is not in response to Dr. Battle, but I didn't get to finish. I also wanted to push back against the idea that the curriculum itself made the difference, because I think that if we had any curriculum, other than the Florida Virtual Learning Curriculum that was structured, that we would have seen gains. And we brought ourselves back up, for the most part, to pre-pandemic levels, which shows us that maybe this curriculum works as well as our previous curriculum did. But more than that, I think it shows that our teachers are putting in the time and the effort, and the parents are stepping alongside of them to help. So I just -- I also want to push back on that narrative, that it's the curriculum that created this gain, because I don't think that's necessarily the truth.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Mrs. Elrod?
I read it when we saw that it said core curriculum and promising scholars. I read that as teachers being included inside of it, because, as you said, no curriculum teaches itself. It, you know, we -- as Dr. Changus just said, data shows that the number-one indicator for student improvement and student outcomes is, of course, having a high-quality teacher. I guess on that note, Dr. Battle, a request that I would have is while we're trying to continuously figure out, and again, I understand there's no silver bullet, but so we're trying to figure out what are the best practices, where are we seeing the most improvements, what programming is it as we go through it, not only in our own review processes for SRO dollars and just our own best practices within teaching and learning, is there a way, or if there's not a way, can we create a way where teachers and staff members can provide input of where they think they saw the most gains, or what they thought was the most beneficial from their expert and end-user experience? I don't know.
Mr. Elrod, if you can hear me okay. Part of our process as we're -- and I'll just take our content knowledge-based curriculum, part of that process is that's kind of integrated in the professional learning and the POC process, but I'll continue to work with our teaching and learning team about other opportunities for teacher feedback and for them to share their experiences. I know the team is there, and I'm sure they can share many, many stories and feedback we've already received from our principals and from our teachers and our support staff around the positive impact that they've seen around these initiatives. And so, we'll continue to think through additional ways to really capture them, and it's been very positive feedback. And so, we'll continue to think about how to capture that and share that information out with the board as we move forward.
All right, thank you all very much for the presentation and the discussion. We will -- thank you, Dr. Changus. We'll now move on to a discussion on elementary school safety. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, thank you for that. Before we get into discussion, Dr. Battle, do you have any updates on elementary security?
This is just a discussion with the board. We didn't prepare her for this.
You didn't prepare her for this? She has to answer the questions.
That's the -- so, when you sent this to us, that's what David was asking you about, if you wanted a discussion.
But there's no way we can have a discussion, because we need answers.
Okay, what we can do is start the discussion now, and then whatever specific questions we develop, we can send that and add it to our future agenda.
Okay, because we have to have the director to be a part of the conversation. So in order for us to see or understand if there's any updates on elementary school safety besides what we got last time. So it's hard for me to ask the questions. Have we decided to do anything different as far as SROs or security officers? Do we decide to do anything different as far as this amount of money that the mayor office is supposed to propose for security? So I'm just -- this is a mute situation, because we don't have her to answer these questions. So I guess I'm going to table it, I guess, until later, until she can be able to answer some of those questions, because parents want to know, they're watching, they want to know. And without Dr. Battle being able to be involved with the conversation, it's hard for us or parents to get some updates.
All right, if you don't mind submitting that to both myself and Dr. Sevier, whatever questions you want Dr. Battle prepared -- to be prepared to present, we'll have that happen.
Okay, so I'll just prepare -- she needs to be prepared the next time to present on any updates on elementary school security. Parents want to know. And this was supposed to happen, and this is what I wanted to happen, and have the discussion while she was here, so that she can give us an update, because parents want to know right before school starts, what are some of the options that -- any new options to make sure that our elementary schools are secure. So it is...
Mrs. Elrod?
My -- if parents want to know, what I have done, what I suggest, is that you ask those individual questions into Dr. Sevier, or you can go directly to Dr. Battle. And because a board discussion, I can understand why you're questioning it, a board discussion is only among us on the board and doesn't include her.
It does. It does. We've never not had a board discussion without asking questions from the director.
I hear you, Mrs. Bush, but we have, and we made sure to talk about that in the chat also.
It may have happened, but if we have questions, she's there to answer those questions. So that is not accurate.
Well, per our definitions and policies, a board discussion is only supposed to be within us, and we don't do votes and all that kind of stuff.
We're not doing any votes. Anyhow, let me just end this right now, because this is really a mute -- this is a mute situation right now.
Mrs. Elrod still has the floor, go ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
I don't even want to hear it.
We have people that have questions.
I don't want your advice.
Mrs. Bush, Mrs. Elrod still has the floor.
The question's supposed to be for parents, period.
Mrs. Bush, Mrs. Elrod still has the floor.
I don't want to hear it no more.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
I don't want to hear it.
We had a review, because it is a discussion, so we did have a review over elementary school safety just a few weeks ago, and we were provided...
Mrs. Elrod, that is not what I asked for. That is not what I asked for.
Mrs. Elrod still has the floor, so we are asking you to wait your turn.
I don't care, because it's a mute point.
Mrs. Bush, we talked to you before about waiting your turn.
It's a mute point. We don't have the director here to answer the questions.
We'll continue to wait until Mrs. Elrod finishes speaking. Go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
You can keep on going if you want to.
I understand the question, which is, what are we doing with the money from the mayor's office, which is really, I guess, from the city, for additional security, which was, again, discussed a couple of weeks ago. It was my understanding that the majority of that money was being spent on transoms, and particularly schools that don't currently have them. I don't know of any schools in my district that affects, but I know that there's at least two in Genie's district, just from talking to parents. And it also is supposed to go towards an increase of immediate or automatic background checks. I forgot the exact terminology for that, but we do these quick background checks. So we're trying to do that. And then additionally, the buzzing-in technology that we have, which goes along with the transoms. So that was the majority of those funds. And so that's how we were spending it, and that -- those were the focuses. So if that is the question, I believe I have it answered. Of course, again, if you need specifics on, like, what is the timeline of when those will be done at specific schools, or if you have an individual school issue, historically, what I would do is I would just ask that, so people don't have to wait. But overall, we were told that it would be transoms, automatic, or quick, and I wish I remembered the term, and if y'all can remember that term.
What is a transom? What do you mean?
It's not a transom, is it? It's a vestibule, and I keep saying a transom, and I --
Okay.
Sorry, that's a design term, and I apologize. Vestibule. And the automatic or quick background checks, and then, of course, the phone call procedures where we video conference parents in through the vestibule, not the transom. So those were the focuses of those dollars. So I know we have that answer, I don't know the specifics, but if you have those questions, I'm sure we can get those answers, hopefully.
Do y'all know -- I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I can have Dr. Sevier send out that first -- that slide deck from a few weeks ago, or maybe a month and a half ago, when we first had the conversation, just to kind of restart. All right, Mrs. Masters?
I was just wondering if, you know, those night locks, that this is a question I've gotten from some constituents as well, and I guess there's nobody to answer it, maybe y'all know. The night locks, that like, the little flaps that like, help keep the doors locked? I've been in some of our schools where we have those. Is that a school-wide thing, or...?
I think that's something we can send on to Dr. Sevier to get specific responses for.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That was something I've had a question about. As PTOs come to me saying, what, you're like, what are you talking about?
I just want to make sure we're...
It's still within a school board?
I'm understanding what you're asking about.
Locks. Like those locks where you go in, okay, so you're in the classroom, and then there's a little like flap thing at the bottom, it's called a night lock.
Is it that thing that you automatically flip when you get into a hotel room?
Yes.
My wife flips before I can even get the thing.
Same, yeah, that. That's just like another, an added security thing. And so, you know, as PTOs come to me saying, hey, we were thinking we could buy this, or we could do that, or do we have this, that was one of the questions we had, was those kind of special locks. Yeah, that was a good way, yeah, like in a hotel room. It just makes it even harder to, I don't know. Sorry.
Yes, any other questions?
That didn't contribute very much to the conversation. That was just one of the questions I had.
You have a question?
No, that's good. So any other questions that you all have, again, please just submit them to Dr. Sevier, and he can have -- he can make sure that Dr. Battle receives them, Dr. Battle and her team receive them.
Okay. I'm going to put this back on there. I'm going to put this back on the agenda again. I'm putting notice, putting it up back, putting on public notice, I'm going to put it back on the agenda, so that we can have the director to answer some of these questions, and so she can be able to give us a report. The report that was done a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever the case may be, that was something that parents were not satisfied with, that were not satisfied with elementary schools still not getting the proper attention that they deserve, that they need, especially what just played out in our country. It's almost like it's not, this is not important, and this is, I'm so sick to my stomach to even think that we think that this is okay, not having a plan for our elementary schools. It's appalling, and parents want to know and want updates. They don't want to hear that high school and middle school gets that type of attention and get that type of presence, and then elementary school is, again, lost in the shuffle, again. So I'm going to put it back on the agenda. She can have another report, so she can update the parents on any additional updates on school security for elementary schools. Also, with the mayor's budget or the proposed budget for additional funds for security, that hasn't even played out. That was something that he just suggested or recommended. So I don't know of any funds that have been additionally used for elementary school security. So if there has been some funds that have been invested in school, elementary school security, I would like to see that, because at the last presentation, it was something that was proposed. So if there's been monies used, as far as what you mentioned, then I would like to see it, because parents want to see it. So that's the reason why I'm bringing this up, because parents want answers. Those children that are in elementary schools, that's the reason why I wanted to have this discussion, and if we can't have discussion with the director right now, then we'll just, I will table this, and I will have it put back on the agenda, and I'm making this a public notice that I will, so that we can get an update. Three weeks ago, of information is not something parents want to hear, because it still did not include safety for our elementary schools, as far as SROs or security, whatever the case may be, that we need to make sure that that is done. We just saw Inglewood. We already saw that play out and how that worked. That didn't work. Thank God our teachers were able to do what they had to do to man, an individual, to try to get into the schools. So we need to be more intentional, and we need to make sure that we are moving forward on putting a plan together for our elementary schools. God forbid anything happens to any of our children, and I am, we are asking for an update, and being more intentional, making sure that our elementary schools are given the same attention as our high school and middle schools. If something happens to our children, there is going to be consequences, because I have said, parents are saying, they want answers, they want a plan.
All right, so Mrs. Masters, and then Mrs. Elrod.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to suggest that we maybe, as we're sending all these questions that we have, that we've had from constituents, could we then request that those questions be answered by Dr. Battle at the board meeting? Like, is there another way we could put this on the agenda?
Yes.
We're going to have like, sort of, the report out on that? Great. And then also, I know we have had these sort of audits of our schools going on, you know, checking how we've been doing with security, and, you know, without wanting to sort of reveal everything. I mean, I want to, I don't want us to like, reveal so much about our safety procedures that we end up then endangering our safety. But if we could have some sort of report out on sort of how those audits are going, you know, what the findings have been, based on that. And then, beyond that, while I'm really, I think it is really important that we are prepared to be reactive, should the worst happen. I think we should also continue along this path that we began in being more proactive about this, in sharing in our student handbook about gun safety, and in ensuring that the relationships in buildings among adults and students are such that students feel comfortable sharing, if they know that some other student is considering doing something dangerous, or if they are considering doing something dangerous. Because that has actually, based on research, the most effective method for preventing violence in schools is whistleblowers, is children who feel comfortable sharing that they're concerned about another child and what they might do, or that they're concerned about what they might do, and that they're comfortable enough to share that with an adult in the building. So that's sort of what I brought to add to this discussion today. And I'll say, you know, I do find it concerning, the parents speaking to us about their concerns about one of our middle schools today, but I've also seen the other side of that, and I've seen how restorative conferencing can work. I was with a bunch of college friends this past weekend, and I said, "restorative justice", and they laughed, and they were like, "What are you talking about?". One of them was talking about her child being bullied, and I said, "Well, it sounds to me like there needs to be a restorative conference there, because this kid clearly has a problem, because he's like everyone's bully, at a private school in North Carolina, so don't worry about that, it's not here." But I've seen it work, and it feels like a lot as a parent, when you get the call that explains to you, this child did this, and this child reacted this way, and then we all got together, and we talked about it together, and then they called a parent, and they fill you in on how it all went down. But it actually works, and it actually does build these bridges and these relationships where children later feel more comfortable with those adults. And it is happening in our schools, and in the ones where it's not, you know, we got to get at that. And it is really important that parents and students feel comfortable coming to us, if all of those processes aren't happening the way they should be, so that we can make sure that those processes are working everywhere. It's a big district, it is, I mean, it's a lot, it's unruly, and it's a lot to keep up with, but I think it can be done, if we're very intentional about it. And I think, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, so.
Mrs. Elrod?
Thanks. I got great news for you.
Yeah?
We are doing secure storage inside the parent handbook, and I think that that We are doing secure storage inside the parent handbook, and I think that that will be helpful, not only to potentially reduce dangerous weapons inside of our school, but also unintentional shootings and potential suicides. As I'm sure many of us know, gun death is the number-one reason for death in children in the United States, which I find unacceptable. So it is a community issue, and my thought, and I'm glad that MMPS is doing it, is providing that secure storage information to not only protect our students and our teachers inside of our schools, but protect them in a more whole-child approach as well. I know that we've had some past experiences with weapons being brought inside of our school, and we have found them through, and I don't remember the term, and I apologize, our text processing, where we have certain grade bands that have the text back and forth with navigators, and then in younger grades, they conference one-on-one. But we've had some instances of having, being told of concerns or issues through that. And so I think you're, that's a great point of building those relationships, not only beneficial to the overall health of a student, and also their student outcomes, because if their basic needs are being met, then everything else is being met, or they're better able to be met as an educational lead. I think the best thing to do is have our questions sent in, so we can get that as a part of our director's report, so that it's most beneficial to Ms. Bush. And if it's not able to be put in the director's report for the next meeting, maybe even more helpful, because it would be faster for her, is if it was inside the director's report that we receive on Fridays, because it sounds like most of that's probably going to be overview of information of things that we're probably already doing. My reasoning for believing that is, is we do know about that money, it was inside the budget that we approved, and so we have had some discussions about that, and we approved our budget last week. So some of that information we're available of and aware of. So I, I think that will be beneficial if we get that information in, so we can put it into our report, whether it's the next meeting or for the follow-ups on Fridays, and I will let that be up to the executive committee on what's best to do that.
All right, be there no more discussion. Yes, please submit questions to Dr. Sevier. Mrs. Bush, if this is your request, please submit to him exactly how you would like it listed. All right, we'll move on to announcements. Mrs. Bush?
Thank you. Let me pull it up real quick, I'm sorry. So last year, I co-hosted one of the largest back-to-school baskets in southeast Davidson County. I co-hosted with a very amazing nonprofit organization called Stronger Than My Father, Marcus Manis, who is the president. And we are doing it again this year. We're also adding more community leaders. Joyce Towne is also a part of this big event, who has done an amazing job on helping with us having another big back-to-school. So it's called Southeast Community Day, and it's going to be on July 30th, and it's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're going to have our emcee, it's going to be Towanda Coleman from Channel 5, so we're really excited about that. We're going to have food, music, art, dance, and community engagement. We're going to have most of our southeast schools that will be represented in the district. We will have free tents or free space to represent their schools. We're going to have food trucks, we're going to have entertainment from local artists that will be performing, and we will also, which I'm really, really, really excited, we're going to have our first parade. So we are really excited that we're going to have a parade. We're going to be acknowledging our, our diversity that's in our community, and also our schools and our kids, so we're really excited about that. Again, mark your calendars, calendar for July 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we would love to see all of our kids out, and also, we're going to be feeding them for free, and we're going to have an art space, we're going to have so much great things, we're going to give them a free T-shirt. So we're really excited about what we're going to be doing on July 30th. Thank you.
Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. We have, Overton's baseball tryouts are on Tuesday, August the seventh, second, not seventh, excuse me, Tuesday, August the second, at 6:00 p.m. Also this week, on Thursday, there is the meeting happening at Oliver Middle School. It is both in-person and virtual, as requested, a hybrid style, and it begins at 6:00. And again, it will be at the school and virtual. The email came from Ms. Wilson, if you have any questions or concerns about how to join that. And lastly, we have, oh, I wanted to mention, lastly, just in case anybody is a SpongeBob fan, Children's Theater is, in the National Children's Theater, which is the oldest children's theater in the nation, is currently putting on SpongeBob Musical. They're great partners of us at MMPS by providing free field trips. And so, or not free field trips, but great field trips. And the musical right now, which is, of course, not available to students, because we're not in school, but it's really great, and I would suggest you go see it, and I think it ends this week. Thanks.
Mrs. Masters?
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm very excited to learn that we are going to have some summer graduates on July 25th, I think, that's right.
26.
26. So I, I love that our students get the opportunity to do credit recovery and still graduate by the end of the summer, and so, and I'm very excited that I get to be the board member at a couple of those. Thank you for allowing me that, to do that.
Thank you.
So just wanted to let you all know that that work continues. Also wanted to make sure everyone knows that we, we have some redistricting, so some of us have different schools than we had before, and that's all up to date on the MMPS website. So if you're not sure who your board member is, you can check that out. I'm sad to say Maplewood is no longer in District 3. Sharon gets it in District 1, but I'm happy to say that I took Stratford away from Christian. So I'll take it. So there are a few shifts and changes like that. So for anyone who's interested in keeping up with that information, check that out. I think that's all I have.
All right, Mrs. Tyler?
Well, you guys hit on everything I was going to say, so be safe, have a great rest of your summer.
All right, be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.